Good morning and welcome to the April 26 public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin by taking attendance, I'll turn it over to Mark Silverman to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. She's here, we know she's having trouble. There's, I see her, it's Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutte. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Right, and good morning and welcome to the April 26 public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. This meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. You may, if you wish to participate in the public hearing items, you may do so by joining the Zoom webinar at the time, estimated time for your item, which is shown on our agenda, which can be found on our website. And if you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so by going to our YouTube channel. We'll begin the day with a public meeting item, which has already had a public hearing and is returning today with a revised proposal in response to Commissioner comments from the public hearing. And then we will move to our public hearing agenda. And with that, I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everybody. We'll start the Preservation Department Public Meeting Agenda with the one and only item, item number one, LPC 21-09092. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1265, lot 7501. 30 Rockefeller Plaza, the RCA Building and RCA Building Interior Lobby Individual and Interior Landmark. This is an office building and designated lobby designed by the Associated Architects and featuring artwork by Jose Maria Sert and Frank Brangwin and constructed in 1931 to 33 as part of an Art Deco style office, commercial and entertainment complex. The application is to modify openings, extend walls and replace light fixtures within the interior lobby. Install storefront infill at the ground floor and install attractions and accretions of the rooftop observation terraces. This was last presented at the public meeting in December 14, 2021. No action was taken at that time. Staff will do a brief introduction before turning it over to the applicant team after we open the proceedings.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go ahead and open the proceedings now so that that can be a seamless transition. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the applicants may speak right after the staff introduces the project. And I'll note for the record that Commissioner Goldblum is recused on this item. Okay. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners Elizabeth Fagan, Preservation Staff. At the public meeting of December 14, 2021, following the public hearing of September 14, 2021, the Commissioners reviewed a revised proposal related to the top of the rock observation decks, which included modifications to ground floor storefronts and the designated interior lobby spaces and new installations at the roof. The majority of the Commissioners were largely supportive of changes to the storefronts, alterations to interior lobby walls and openings at the ground floor and mezzanine, the installation of an operable beam lift at the 69th floor roof deck, as well as the installation of a beacon at the 70th floor roof deck. The discussion at the December public meeting focused primarily on the design and visibility of the proposed 70th floor observation deck. Most Commissioners continued to express concerns about its size and massing, as well as the materials selected. No action was taken at that time, and the Commissioners requested that the applicants continue to work towards a design that further reduced visibility and better related to the architectural language of the building. And the applicants have returned with a revised proposal and will now walk you through those changes.
Perfect. Thank you, Elizabeth, and good morning Commissioners Cass Backelberg, Higgins, Quays, Barthon Partners. I'm joined by Evi Kelly and Neil Kachni of Fishman Spire. I'll run through the presentation and we're all available to answer any questions that you may have. As Elizabeth mentioned, at the December public meeting, where we presented a revised design for the viewing platform at the 70th floor of 30 Rockefeller Plaza, there were concerns expressed by the Commissioners about the visibility of the platform, its massing and its effect, its horizontal effect on the reading of the building from the top, excuse me, from the surrounding streets. And in response to that, the team has been working in intervening months to develop a different approach to the same goal. And that goal is obviously enhancing the experience for the visitors to the observation deck and providing uninterrupted 360-degree views of the surrounding city. And this plan illustrates what in plan is, and in actuality, a modest intervention now that actually, I think satisfies all the concerns that the Commissioners have expressed in the initial public hearing in September and again in December. And what is being proposed, and I'll show you a rendering in just a moment, is a lift, this sort of almost impermanent vertical lift here on the west end of the 70th floor in place of the viewing platform that occupied approximately half of that floor. So let's get into it and I'll share with you the visual. So just a quick look at this and then we'll back up and I'll give you the details. But on the left is an existing photograph looking west from the 69th floor. On the right is a rendering. And this is illustrating the replacement of the decommission Doppler radar, the removal of all the antenna masks and the installation of a vertical lift on the west end of the floor that rises and lowers. This obviously is the lift in its raised position. When it is lowered down to the deck, it is not visible at all. And its visibility from the surrounding streets obviously is very different than this sort of permanent horizontal platform. It, as compared to the views of the platforms from September and December that you all saw, where you did express concerns about the effect of this permanent structure would have on the reading of the building, which does have this sort of vertical component, also the horizontal setback from the terracing. But there was concern about its visibility from the street and also its effect of the reading of the building. Continuing on, looking at comparative plans, an existing plan on the top, the plan from the December public meeting and the current revised plan on the bottom. So you can see the Doppler radar here, the decommission vents. At the center of the roof is that brick clad elevator bulkhead and the stairs that connect to the 69th floor. The viewing platform that was presented previously, approximately 127 feet in length and about 30 feet in width. And then the revised design here for this vertical lift. The lift itself is about 12 feet in diameter. There's a four foot setback off the edges of the parapet. And there would be simple low glass railings here just for protection for the people on either side and for queuing. This is a 42-inch railing set basically at the same plane as the parapet. In elevation compared to what we presented in December, this is the fixed platform with the cast aluminum panels and then the lift in its upper position. The platform had a height of about 20 feet and at its top edge of the parapet. And the viewing platform where one would stand will be, or sorry, the viewing lift will have a height of about 30 feet, but obviously will rise and lower and completely disappear when it's not engaged, as you can see in this elevation. The railing around the platform where visitors would stand is no taller than the surrounding parapet. And then compared to the existing on the top and the proposed in its raised position directly below. So obviously there are features across the roof, nonhistoric features across the roof currently, the Doppler radar, the very tall antenna masks, and those elements would be removed and the lift would be installed on the west end of the roof. In section, this is the previous version with a viewing platform and the lift shown here. Again, you can see the lift is about 12 feet in diameter at its base and four feet offsets off the perimeter with a standing platform at 30 feet above the deck. In its raised section, in its raised position and lower position, when it is lowered, each of the five stages stack. They're concentric circles, they stack together and they lower down into the volume of the 69th floor. So they disappear completely. And again, you can just see the glass railings here around the platform itself, coplanar more or less with the surrounding parapets. Looking at some of the details and talking a little bit about materiality, the base will be an aluminum. It'll pick up the detailing of some of the cast aluminum spandrel panels that one sees around the perimeter of the 69th floor. It'll have a solid seal that will sort of root the whole feature to the deck of the 70th floor. And then each of the concentric circles above the four stages will be in either a resin or a perforated brass with some backlighting. The lighting really will not be visible during the day, but we're just illustrating that there will be some uplighting as part of this at the top edge of each of these circles. And then details here showing the metal platform. It'll be, the standing surface will be glass, as you can see here in the rendering, supported by a metal frame, a glass railing at the top edge, and then these individual sections with uplighting at the top edge of each ring. And then at the base, again, the glass railing here around the platform that will nest down into the deck and into the 69th floor when it's in the lowered position. A few additional renderings, again, an existing view on the left and proposed with the lift in its lowered position and then in its raised position. Additional sections. So this is a longitudinal section of what was presented previously. Again, the platform at about 130 feet in length. It also included a lift that would allow people to get from the 70th floor up into or onto the viewing platform. And then just the simplified version here with just the lift itself in its raised position. The bulkhead, as it exists today, would remain and the antenna masks around that lift would be removed. Comparative views to what you saw in December and the current proposal with that central bulkhead and the lift to the west. And then the existing and the proposed with it in the down position and the up position. And then another view, sort of a bird's eye view. And obviously, the goal here is to provide uninterrupted views of the city beyond. And this provides both something that I think addresses your concerns, but also enhances the experience for the visitors and enhances the possibilities for these views to the north, to the south, east and west. A bit on the materiality, a collection of the palette, material palette here on the upper left. I will make the point here that this is not going to be used. This is a photograph of an acrylic lens. We will not be using acrylic. The cladding around the upper stages of it then will either be resin or perforated backlit metal. The base of the lift will be aluminum. There'll be bronze accents and some of the railings will be stainless and obviously glass. And the intention here is to pick up on the materiality and tone that one sees both around the perimeter of the building, these cast aluminum panels, but also, as you can see, some of these other photographs, the entry to 30 Rockefeller Plaza, the cast glass, the sort of warm yellow metal glow and glass that one sees on the exterior as well as within the lobby of 30 Rockefeller Plaza. Turning to the visibility of this feature now from the surrounding streets, we have a series of rendering from the same viewpoints that you've seen before, but obviously significant change to the visibility. So an existing view on the left and a revised view with the lift in the up position, as well as the details. Again, you can see in the existing view, the various antenna masks and the Doppler and then the proposed view with the beacon on the east end and the lift in the up position on the west end. Compared now with what you saw in December, detailed views of that viewing platform on the top of the building and now replaced with a lift in the up position. As well, we've been talking about this, and as this project has evolved, this other project in the foreground on 46th Street and Fifth Avenue continues to move forward. So now this is illustrating the massing that's available to us online of the X development on the northwest corner of 46th Street and Fifth Avenue. So once this project is underway, this view from the south on Fifth Avenue will be completely obscured. Turning now to the Sixth Avenue side, this is also from 46th Street, again, existing on the left, proposed, revised on the right with a lift in the up position and a detailed view of that. You can just make out the top portion of the lift here in this detailed rendering. Compared with what you saw back in December with a platform and the lift and then existing and proposed with a lift in the down position where it basically completely disappears from view. There are a few slots on 53rd Street. There's this one moment where you were sort of in the, across the street from the plaza with CVS headquarters building here, and the building is referred to as Pink Rock directly to the east. There's this moment where the beacon and the lift would be visible in the same view. And you can see detail here with the antenna mask and then those two features that are part of this application here in the detailed view. And then turning from the west again, this sort of moment, a few, maybe 50, 75 feet on the west side of Broadway, just between these tall buildings on Sixth Avenue, there is this moment where the back of 30 Rockefeller Plaza is visible. And then you can see the existing view here with the bulkhead and the antenna mask and Doppler and the proposed detailed view with a lift in its raised position. Obviously, when the lift is in the lowered position, it will not be visible. And the lift will be in use, you know, through the day depending on depending on demand. It is up for about five minutes and then it's lowered down anywhere from, you know, two minutes when it is busiest to considerably longer when it's not in use, obviously. And what I'd like to do also, just quickly to run through the other components of the application, these are features that you had seen in September and December. Back in December, there was a consensus among the Commissioners that everyone was comfortable with these other elements, but because they are part of the application, I do want to just run through these quickly. There are modifications on the ground floor to storefronts and the interior lobby that are really keyed to circulation, wayfinding, egress on the exterior. This includes changes to these three storefronts with new infill swing doors and revolving doors similar to infill in other locations around the building. Detailing to match detailing of the other storefronts, obviously a materiality as well. Within the lobby, the extension of this wall, and you can see an existing photo here in a rendered view here, bringing this wall forward, finishing it in the same champlaine black marble and the bronze trim and introducing an inner layer between the new walking surface and the existing terrazzo to protect the historic terrazzo as part of this new construction. Up on the mezzanine level, modifications to one bay here. You can see on the left an existing photo and a rendered view. Again, this is to help circulation from the upper floors as visitors are coming downstairs and out. This work is not visible from the main floor of the lobby at the ground level and is really just a modification that's visible to those who are passing through this portion of the mezzanine. On the 69th floor, the introduction of the Beam Experience, which will afford views, uninterrupted views out to the north across Central Park in the city. And then up on the 70th floor, as I mentioned, the proposed vertical lift here on the west end, the change to the concrete pavers and the introduction of a mosaic tile decking across the roof and the rooftop beacon. And then two views here, the existing view looking east with these concrete pavers replaced by this sort of mythologically celestial inspired mosaic and then the rooftop beacon on the far east end of the roof. With that, I'll stop and we're happy to take any questions you all may have.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead.
Is the height shown necessary to get 360-degree views or could it be shorter?
It is. Can we go back to the, go back to the section? Can I control? Can I go back? Sorry, this is going to take a little while.
I can answer the question without showing it.
The height gets you above the elevator bulkhead and provides uninterrupted views. So it allows you to be above that central elevator bulkhead.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any other questions. So I'm starting to unmute all of you so that we can move to our discussion. And I do want to thank the applicants for working so hard on this. And I think that, you know, as a commission, this is one of our most important landmarks and we recognize that this is a really important landmark to the city that really kind of contributes to the vibrancy of the city and I think attracts residences and businesses that are around it, but also attracts visitors. And I think that allowing for new circulation and these activities on the roof, you know, I think will support tourism, will support even help support the recovery of the city. So I think, you know, this is an important landmark, but you know, we also have been recognized that as an important landmark, we were trying to balance those great goals that this building can contribute to and preserving the kind of architectural form and character of the building. And I know that you have worked very hard. Our concerns, you know, I think we were very supportive of the storefront changes, the changes to the interior lobby and mezzanine, the beacon and even the beam ride. But our discussion really focused on this platform and how you saw it from these views, both in terms of the amount of visibility and its relationship to the architecture itself. And so, you know, you had a second design that I think we still felt was interesting, but still didn't quite address those concerns. And now you've come back with a much reduced design where you've eliminated the platform altogether and just redesigned the lift to be operable, the operable ride, and which significantly reduces the visibility and makes it more comparable to the Doppler and the masks and other things that have traditionally been up there. And also when it's, and then eliminates the visibility when it's not in use. So I think you've, you know, you've really listened and come a long way. So I do appreciate that. I appreciate all of the thought and working so closely with us as we think about the right balance here. So I just wanted to kick off with that and acknowledge how responsive you've been. So thank you. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Lutte, would you start this one?
Sorry, hold on one second.
And I do, I think, you know, while you're getting ready, I'll just say that I think, you know, these views are really incidental views. This and the view from the west where I think you don't really know which building it is that you're looking at. Again, much reduced in these views and invisible in other ways. But I think our concern was primarily about the Fifth Avenue views, one of which is about to be obscured by a new development from the north looking south. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I have to say, I think you summed it up pretty succinctly, Sarah. I do also want to thank the applicant for, and it's not only on this presentation, I feel this way with pretty much every application we receive, that when we provide input, the applicant is willing to go back, you know, not once, but several times to try to address the issues that we bring up. And I think that this this modification is actually a good one because it, you know, even though on some level conceptually, I would prefer that it not exist. But given the goals of the project and I certainly am in support of making sure that our, not only our architectural treasures, but the places that are considered to be treasures by the people who live here and also visit this city and Archipelago Center is certainly one of them, as are the iconic viewscapes of the city that residents and tourists get to see when they visit the tops of all of these majestic buildings. I appreciate the importance of continuing to think of ways to enhance those experiences. So I do believe that in this instance, as you mentioned, I actually like this redesign. I think it's very clever. It's well done. It's good looking. And as you said, when it's not projected, it's not visible. And when it is, it's much more modestly visible than, you know, so to speak. I don't want to exaggerate that. And so I can accept this. And again, I thank the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yeah, I think they solved all the issues I had about the podium. And I think it works. And I'm especially happy with the paving, the mosaic paving, I think. And I can accept all eight items that was proposed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
It's a striking response to what the applicant heard from us. And you know, often applicants hear our words and they miss our tone and our direction. And I think they got it pretty clearly. And it adds a new aspect to our analysis, which is to say, you know, when we look at visibility, you know, we look at, you know, the bulk that's being, that's visible. We look at the quantity of visibility points there are, the angles at which it's visible. We look at the background. But here is something new, a time element, which is to say, how often is it visible? And it's kind of interesting. We may never see something quite like this again. And I think it is a first certainly for me in these years. And I think that all of that put together means that it's really going to go largely unnoticed by the public in the context of this building. So so I think that's fantastic. And I already was okay with the lobby changes, et cetera. So I'm on board.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I'm not sure if I was, if there were others, but I certainly remember expressing enthusiasm about the Gabalini design for what was previously proposed. And I thought it was an interesting riff interpretation on the existing ornamentation. And I actually thought that the roof of this building could take this element even though visible. But, and so, so that was my position then. I think there must have been lots of inputs, potentially beyond our own concerns and critiques that must have led to the reduced scope here. And I think that that's perfectly reasonable. What I do think is nice now is that the kind of the original spirit of the observation roof, Rockefeller Center observation roof is, I think, further elaborated, developed. And they're sticking to this kind of idea of observation in all of those early images that actually are in the appendix now, but we've seen before of sort of a kind of people reclining, you know, sitting on the roof and peering over the edges. This issue of observation now with the kind of the lifts on the bars and this new lift, I think are, you know, new ways of trying to achieve that kind of versions of observation. I think it's sweet. And it's, I don't know how necessary it actually is because people can still peer over the edges and observe. But I don't think that it undermines or diminishes the experience of the current roof. I'm happy for the fact that the visibility is so considerably limited and only at intervals. There'll probably be a lot of people standing in line waiting to get up into this rather reduced space up there for the lift. But again, I think it's in the spirit of observation and does not and is, and observation out of, from the roof, but not observation that is visibility from the street. And I think that that's a positive thing. And so I can support it. And I feel the same way about all of the proposals that we've discussed before for the interior and lobbies.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I uh, agree with the comments of uh, my fellow commissioners and uh, the chair about the project. I think that uh, you know, it is not going to be uh, visible in a distracting way. And it serves a uh, a purpose for tourism in New York. Uh, and I think that the uh, bottom uh, the uh, lobby changes and other changes that we looked at last time are also appropriate. So I can approve this as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I think the lobby changes are appropriate. Um, I think this is infinitely preferable to the previous designs.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Um, you know, there are rooftop additions and then there are rooftop additions. Um, as I think my colleagues know, I'm often uh, more accepting of visible rooftop additions uh, than some others. Uh, but I think on this case, this iconic, and as um, Sarah said, one of our most important landmarks, uh, the top of the building here was crucial. And uh, seeing what we saw before was one, one or two or three degrees too far for me too. So I think what's being proposed here now is exciting. Uh, it's, it's there when it's there and it's not there when it's not there, uh, which introduces a level of kinetic quality to architecture, which I've always been interested in mostly. Uh, we don't want kinetic quality in architecture, beats uh, something is about to fail. But um, nonetheless, I think this is exciting and uh, so much preferable to what we saw before. And uh, I, I think it's wholly appropriate and I congratulate the team for sticking with it and um, and, you know, exploring so many, I'm sure, options that we didn't even see uh, to come up with what I think will be a very exciting uh, and appropriate addition to the top of this icon.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we have a consensus to approve. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make the motion?
Sure. Uh, in the matter of LPC 21 dash zero nine zero nine two thirty Rockefeller Plaza RCA, building and RCA building interior lobby, individual and interior landmark. An office building designed and designated lobby designed by the Associated Architects and featuring artwork by Jose Maria Surt and Frank Brangwin and constructed in nineteen thirty-one, thirty-three as a part of an Art Deco style office, commercial and entertainment complex. The application is to modify openings, extend walls and replace light fixtures within the interior lobby, install storefronts infill at the ground floor and install attractions and accretions at the rooftop observation terraces. I recommend approval finding that the proposed ground floor storefront infill is in keeping with the configuration of other commission approved storefront infill at this building and will match the materials and details of the historic storefront infill throughout the center. And the work will require only limited removal of plain granite bulkhead cladding, that the north and south sides of the ground floor corridors are not perfectly symmetrical and have been altered in the past, therefore the work will not disrupt a pristine plan. That visibility across the lobby is limited due to central elevated banks and stairways. Therefore, the further change in symmetry of the plan will be largely imperceptible within the space and the proposed work will only be apparent when walking through the north corridor. That the work will entail lowering only one vitrine opening. The existing wall and floor finishes will be retained and protected and that historical medical metal finishes the door and some stone will be retained and relocated, thereby limiting the loss of historic material. That the proposed enlarged opening at the mezzanine will not detract from the overall experience of the space and will only result in the removal of minimal historic fabric. That the rooftop terraces of the building historically have been used as observation decks and featured various installations and accretions. Therefore, the proposed work is in keeping with historic use of the building's top floors. That the existing obsolete equipment, including the Doppler radar, will be removed and that the proposed new installations will be less visible from the street than these prior installations. That the proposed rotating beam lift experience and telescoping observation deck will recess into the sixty-nineth and seventieth floor roof terraces and will not be visible while inactive and will only be visible from long distances while active and therefore will not detract from the significant views of this building from public thoroughfares. That the top of the building historically has featured illuminated signage and the proposed beacon is in keeping with this effort to call attention to the top and we'll call, recall historic beacons found at other notable skyscrapers. That the dynamic quality of beam lift, observation deck and beacon will not be perceptible from, from most public thoroughfares due to the height of these installations above the ground. That's just the design of the beacon lantern echoes the historic Atlas statue found at the ground level of forty-five Rockefeller Plaza, as well as historic fixture at the roof as evidenced in historic photos and therefore will be compatible with the Art Deco style and artistic features of the center. That the design and finishes of, of proposed, of the proposed observation deck relate to decorative motifs found throughout the center and will complement the building while standing out as a contemporary structure. And that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of this beloved landmark.
You and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Oh, second.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Here Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved. Thank you and good luck. And we'll now move to our public hearing agenda.
Okay, we'll start the public hearing agenda with uh, item number one. LPC twenty-two dash zero five five four six. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block two forty-three, lot thirty-three, one hundred Pierpont Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an Anglo Italianate style row house built in eighteen fifty-seven and the application is to modify the front facade and areaway.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. They now have control of the presentation. Um, just click on your screen. You can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Uh, please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Uh, hello Commissioners, Brendan Coburn speaking for one hundred Pierpont Street. Can we go back to the first slide for a second? Great, thank you. Um, this is uh, this, the, the two primary things we are trying to accomplish in this project is to create a more um, pronounced entryway for, through the garden level of this house and then clean up the areaway and make it more functional for the owners. I would just have you take a quick peek at the tax photo here on the front. Um, this is one of three Anglo Italianate houses. Um, this photograph shows it when it still had a stoop. All of them once had stoops. Um, all of them have lost their stoop. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Uh-oh. Oh, there we go. Um, this is the current condition at the house. Our, our project is there in the middle. It is the one with the pumpkins on top of the enframent. Um, and uh, and you can see that it has uh, a sort of uh, I think, a little bit too modest uh, in framing it around the door. If we could go to the next slide, please. These photos I'm providing for a little bit of context to explain the project. So again, we see our house is uh, head on there, the brownstone house, the one to the left, uh, has a, a taller enframent that you see. And the one to the right also has a taller enframent and another sort of funny um, opening into a service uh, uh, door. Um, we are also, as part of this proposal, uh, planning to drop the um, areaway that is in front of the window. So if, if you look at photograph number three, you'll see that the areaway is currently raised up at the level of the windowsill at the garden level. So part of this project is sort of cleaning up that areaway as well. Next slide, please. This is just, again, the context. So you can see the three houses as they currently exist. Uh, ours is in the middle. The, the white one on the left has the taller enframent and the, uh, the, you, you window, sorry, the building at ninety-eight also has a taller enframent. And you can see that all these houses have sort of altered um, their parlor and garden, garden floors from what they were originally. They um, are close to what they were originally up above, um, not so much the one oh two. Next slide, please. Um, just a little more detail so you can see clearly what, how the three houses have been manipulated over the years. Next slide, please. Okay, this is, this drawing is meant to show the existing enframent as it relates to the facade um, when viewed from street level. So it's, it's uh, you know, everything is sort of clipped off because the stairs are going down. So existing is on the left and proposed is on the right. Um, and I will ask for the next slide, please. Um, this shows all of this more clearly because we are now cutting away the section to reveal the sort of full um, uh, uh, design of the, of that garden floor entry. And uh, I also want to just draw your attention to two other aspects of this uh, project, which is the um, the uh, removal of the uh, raised areaway below the window uh, at the garden floor where we're flattening all of that out. And then we're also um, slightly elevating the uh, wall that exists on our property that separates our property from, from the neighbor's property to the right or to the west and putting a planter up there to um, provide a little more uh, privacy uh, and screening of the neighbor's uh, uh, service area and trash enclosure. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this slide is uh, is included for two reasons. One, to show this sort of typical approach to um, uh, that you see in these row house neighborhoods where the stoop has been removed and the uh, the, the main door to the house has been dropped down to the garden or basement level of the house. And it is uh, the, the sort of frequent strategy for these things is to um, allow that, that window, that enframent um, to pop up and engage the window on the parlor floor in, in, in a, in a number of different ways. Sometimes actually causing that parlor floor window to get smaller, sometimes just engaging the sill of that floor. Um, so there's, there is a range of, of ways of handling this. The other thing I wanted to call your attention to in terms of precedent is that all of these um, uh, doorways uh, employ some sort of transom to make, to create a greater um, level of importance for that door, to make the door appear larger. And uh, in, in the case of drawing um, number three, the transom is just a solid wood panel. In the case of uh, sorry, photograph number one, it is uh, decorative iron on a painted black steel background. In the case of photograph number two, it's a real transom with a transparent glass uh, uh, um, transom. And then in number four, it is a translucent glass transom. Um, and all of these, these transoms are uh, are, we believe, sort of concealing a structural spandrel that, that exists behind them. So if we could now go to the next slide. Um, these, these are, I'm, uh, these are included as um, examples of the uh, line of the areaway uh, on uh, Pierpont Street and how there's typically a nice brownstone curb detail with uh, with decorative iron out in front. Uh, next, next slide. These are other examples of um, how the areaways on this block have been handled uh, in terms of some sort of brownstone planter, decorative iron work. Just, just precedent and context for this project. And then next slide, please. This is, we include this because uh, when you, uh, when we look at the, a more detailed drawing that's coming up shortly, um, we are adding a layer of rustication or sort of at, rusticating the garden level of this house slightly differently from the parlor level um, in an attempt to um, you know, create a very clear hierarchy between the lower floor and then the parlor floor. So these are just examples of some of the rustication you see in the neighborhood. Um, the sort of dressing of the edges, the chisel-toothed um, uh, brownstone on the, on garden level. Uh, next, please. Um, now this is a blow up of the existing condition. And you'll see that the enframent on our house is quite low. It's below these two panels on the parlor floor. And you can compare that to the two houses on either side with the taller enframents. So next slide, please. And this is our proposed design. And so we have, what we have done is we've brought our enframent up to the underside of the sill of the parlor floor. And um, and then it sort of extended the uh, the um, fascia of that enframent across to create a slight projection uh, at, separating the lower floor and the upper floor. And then we have uh, the brownstone for the, for the garden level and the window is articulated with a, a sort of a, a chiseled edge and then this um, chisel-toothed finished, sorry, it's tooth-chisel stucco finish, which we achieved um, using a um, neat tenderizer in the, in the, in the brownstone. And this is something that we see quite a bit around Brooklyn Heights. If we go to the next slide, please. Um, so this is a further uh, bill, uh, blow up of that enframent. And you can see that we're, the stucco will all be the same color. The stucco at the uh, garden level has this chisel-toothed finish. Um, would also draw your attention to the uh, the iron door is the existing iron door, which we are reusing. And we are proposing to add this transom above. And our proposed handling of the transom is to use a uh, sort of distressed antique mirror transom panel with the gilded lettering of the address on top of it, um, and then surrounded with ironwork. And that is, that is what is being proposed. If during the course of construction, we discover that a real transom is possible, that there is not a structural member behind this part of the facade, then we would uh, switch this transom to a transparent glass transom that allowed light and uh, a, a taller sense in there. Um, the, the section drawing on the lef- left is showing the slightly elevated um, brownstone wall and then a uh, black steel um, impermanent planter atop that wall, uh, all meant to sort of provide a little bit of additional screening for the neighbor. Next slide, please. Um, and this is the plan showing our modifications to the areaway. And uh, the, the, we're doing two things primarily. One is we're lowering that front areaway and it will all be done in bluestone. And then that, by lowering it, it gives us the ability to hide all of our trash out of view um, from the house, from the neighbors uh, and, and neatens up that area. We're also pulling the stair back a little bit closer to the street. We are extending the brownstone curb um, that currently is at this uh, street facing front of the planter across and returning it towards the planter. And then we are um, extending the ironwork so that uh, then our client can uh, shut the ironwork in the evening and, and have a, a, a defined space. Um, and then we're replacing the, so the stair landing and the front areaway and the steps will now all be done in, in um, solid bluestone. Next slide, please. This rendering just shows our proposed completed project and, and um, in particular, how that uh, curb line extends across the front uh, of the, at the top of the stairs going down and just the massing of the um, of our uh, enlarged enframent. So next slide, please. Uh, and this is our final slide. I just have it here so that you can um, look at the two, the existing and the proposed side by side. That's it. Finished.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Bland, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good presentation, very inclusive. One question, or, and I should know the answer, uh, since I live down the block. Um, are there other gates that separate the uh, the little front yards from um, the street sidewalk?
That's a good question, and I don't know if I know the answer. You mean specifically at the staircase?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's an answer in itself.
Yeah.
I didn't know either. You should.
Yeah, we've done it before, not on this block. Actually, at one eighteen Pierpon and one oh eight Pierpon, in the, if you look at our, uh, LPC sheet one oh nine, those, both of those areaways are sort of fully gated in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Devonshire.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about the size of the, the, the replication size of the stone at the ground level. What your decision-making was behind that, because now you've got three different sizes of stone. And actually, brownstone, um, I don't believe ever would have come in a, in a size that large traditionally. What, what was your decision-making on that?
Yeah, it was, uh, it's kind of simple, which was I, uh, I drew it with smaller and I couldn't get the, uh, couldn't get the proportions I liked with the sort of, uh, you know, um, lintel piece at the top. Then I divided it into, um, into, uh, in half, you know, to, to subdivide the, the horizontal, the, uh, lock rail of the window. And then that actually worked out for the, um, for the floor above. And then the, the lowermost is just the leftover, um, uh, dimension of that, of that, of that, that piece. So it was really just, uh, experimenting with a couple of different, uh, horizontal lines to see which one, uh, sort of worked out, worked out the best, and this is where we arrived.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, other questions? All right, let's see if we have public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify in this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Sasha Sealy, who will take us through the testimony, beginning with anyone who signed up in advance.
All righty, thank you. Judy Stanton from Brooklyn Heights Association, you'll be receiving a request from me. Just. All right, Judy, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record, then you can begin your testimony.
Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn Heights Association, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, okay. Brendan has already directly addressed the BHA concern, um, but I'll read it anyway. Uh, we generally support this application. Our only concern is the new transom window. Our understanding is that the proposed antique mirror behind is designed to simulate normal transom glass, which cannot be installed because it would face into the building structure above the basement ceiling. If that is the case, we believe that a painted wood panel behind the transom would be more typical rather than a mirror. If it turns out that there is no structure in that area, then regular glass could be used. We are not in favor of simulating a glass transom. Thank you. Thank you, that's it.
All righty, thank you. Let me just take a glance back over the attendees, see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this item. And I do not see any more hands raised. I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval of this application, and I will pass it back over to Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much. So would you like to speak more about the transom panel or, uh, address any other final comments you have?
You know, I, um, it's not, it's not hugely important to me. I think it's a, it's a visual trick. Using an antique mirror will sort of create the illusion of there being, uh, uh, glass there, and I think will allow the address to pop, pop more. It's, but if, if everybody is going to be more comfortable with, uh, you know, a black painted piece of steel behind that, uh, transom with the address on that, oh, I think we are totally fine with that, as is the client.
Okay, thank you. And I think in your examples, you showed that there were a combination of wood and glass panels, all probably concealing a structural.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's where we're going to get stuck, so.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I think what I'll do is, um, start to send you requests to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. Whoops, uh, one of you, I just hit mute because you were faster than I was. Uh, all right, Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Um, and again, this is a proposal to address the ground floor and areaway. And thank you, I want to thank Brendan for a very clear presentation. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Bland, our resident commissioner, would you like to start this one?
Not just generally resident, but in the next block. And as of September, it will be fifty years.
Wow.
So amazing. And, um, and like many days, I walked to, uh, the subway this morning, right by this house and checked it out. These are very modest changes, uh, but important, uh, to, um, clean up, as Brendan says, that, um, which is not a very messed up, even now, uh, front yard. But I think these, uh, changes make, uh, make improvements and, and they're appropriate. I, I think I support Judy Stanton's point of view about, uh, a, a mirrored, um, transom, if, if, if a real transom is not possible and would support just a black painted steel, as Brendan has, uh, indicated, would be acceptable to him and the client. Um, I would also, um, uh, given Michael Devonshire's, uh, comment about the size of, of actual, uh, brownstone pieces, uh, asked him to look perhaps one more time with, with the staff, uh, to, uh, at, at the, uh, vertical of the stone or, or the scoring of the stucco that looked like stone. It seems to me to all start with the window, and I think certainly the head and the, and the sill of the window should be, uh, co-terminous with, uh, scorelines. So the question is, is it two or three? And then how does it work out, uh, above and below that? It's a simple little geometry game that I think, uh, Brendan Coburn has already done, but maybe just look at it one more time. Otherwise, I think this is wholly, uh, uh, appropriate. I support it, including the gate.
Great, thanks. And I think there are, uh, many areaways that are enclosed, not necessarily stoops, but areaways, certainly. Okay, um, Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I'm generally in favor of everything that's going on here. I agree with, with Fred. I'm, I'm, you know, it could be just that, uh, there are a few stone nerds that, um, are familiar with how this stuff came out of the ground and, and got cut. But, um, that, that lower coursing seems awkward and large to me. And I, I'm wondering if they can't work with staff to, uh, to work out a, a better proportional system.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Discretant. I think it's appropriate. I think Fred, I agree with Fred's comments wholeheartedly.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I also agree with Commissioner Bland's comments, uh, uh, and, uh, and I think in, in general, this is totally appropriate. And I want to say that, uh, we passed, uh, we hit fifty years, uh, in our location on, uh, in twenty twenty. So we're a little ahead of Fred. But, but not in Brooklyn Heights, so we have a lot of ties to it.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Uh, I think that what's being proposed here for the facade and for the areaway is, is very appropriate, acceptable. Uh, I understand Commissioner Devonshire's, uh, questions and concerns, and I think that the applicant should work with the staff just to, um, be clear about those, about the, the brownstone there. But otherwise, I think this is a very acceptable proposal.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a position on the transom panel?
Uh, I actually am pretty agnostic about it. I think that they're reflective, you know, what they're proposing is this kind of, um, reflective surface is perfectly fine. But if, if others think it should be metal or painted, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay. And I think, um, Commissioner Chapin and Goldblum, you were agreeing with Commissioner Bland on the idea of a metal transom, just to make sure.
I'm, 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 I guess I'm with, I'm with Adi on that. I, I, I thought the mirror was an interesting approach, but i- if others feel that it's, uh, not good, I'll, I'll go along.
I, I think I could go with either one, but, uh, as Commissioner Bland is so familiar with the, uh, location and it is a little atypical, I feel, uh, kind of, uh, leading to his view at this point.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate as is.
All right, and did you have a position on the transom?
You can go either way, it's fun.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I was, I was taken by the sensitivity of the architect on this project. I mean, the, the proportional shift that changed the whole thing was quite masterful. Um, uh, so I can approve this. And the panel, I'm, I've used a word called, that I kind of like, agnostic about it. It, whichever way, the majority goes.
Okay, and Commissioner Lutfi?
Um, I also want to say that I think this project is all about refinements and, um, the architect has done an excellent job. Um, and I agree with all the comments about working with staff on the stonework and, and fine with the transom as it is.
Okay, so I think we probably have six for the transom as-is, but I think that we'll still suggest that they look at it with staff, you know, whether it's mirrored, spandrel or painted, and just explore it a little bit further. Um, then we will have them work with the staff on the, the scoring pattern. So let me go ahead and compose this. Um, in the matter of docket number twenty-two dash zero five five four six, one hundred Pierpon Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, an Anglo-Italianate-style row house built in eighteen fifty-seven. This is an application to modify the front facade and areaway. Um, I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The commission, uh, I also note that the historic parlor floor entrance and stoop were removed and a sunken areaway and basement level entrance created prior to the designation of the historic district. Um, I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the early twentieth century alterations to the facade's lower levels and areaway were not unique or finely crafted. Therefore, the proposed alterations will not eliminate a significant later alteration, that the organization of the proposed facade elements in replication of select historic features will be consistent with early twentieth century alterations commonly found at row houses of this style and age in conjunction with the removal of a stoop and will form a unified composition utilizing features which relate well to the remaining historic features, that the proposed brownstone stucco will closely replicate the existing facade materials and finishes, further supporting the unity of the facade, that the refinement of the entrance around details and raising of the lintel level will help support the primacy of the entrance in keeping with the historic character of the house, that if field conditions prohibit the installation of a, uh, setback. Right, let me leave that one off for, uh, the moment. That, um, the proposed areaway changes are in keeping with typical, uh, uh, areaways throughout the streetscape. However, I recommend that the ver- uh, the applicant work in consultation with the staff to study the vertical dimensions of the ashlers proposed at the ground floor rustigray, rustication to better relate to the proportions and scale of the facade and, um, and that the applicant continue to explore the, uh, the transom panel, whether it be, uh, mirror, spandrel or, uh, painted steel. Uh, and to be consistent with the streetscape of that. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I so second.
All right, Mark, will you, uh, will you, uh, call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, so please continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next item.
Sarah?
Thank you.
Sarah, can I say something before you move?
Yes.
I just did a little calculations and I think I have probably walked by this, this block, this house over my fifty years there, six, at least sixteen thousand times. Isn't that amazing?
That is amazing.
Rough calculations, how much we actually see our neighborhood over a long period of time. And all that time, I still couldn't tell if there were, I couldn't remember if there were other gates that separate. Nonetheless, it's a beautiful block and a beautiful street, and I feel so lucky to have looked there for so long.
That's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that, Fred.
All right, uh, on that note, we'll go ahead and move to item number two, LPC twenty-two dash zero four nine seven six, an application for certificate appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn Block nineteen sixty-four, lot nineteen, one thirteen St. James Place in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate-style row house designed by Peter Donlin and built in eighteen sixty-five, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Adrian, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen.
Okay.
And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys, um, or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Sure, thank you. Uh, hi, good morning. I'm Adrian Coleman and I'm here with my colleagues Jess Hinshaw, Andrea Fisk and Matthew Monteroso. We're from Shapless Studio, an architecture and interior design firm. Today, we're presenting our proposed addition to a townhouse at one thirteen St. James Place. As you know, St. James Place is within the Historic District of Clinton Hill. These are photographs of the townhouse's front facade in the nineteen sixties and the present day. Although we are doing some minimal cosmetic work on the street side, this is being reviewed at staff level. Our presentation this morning will simply cover the more substantial work at the rear yard, where we are adding a two-story extension. This photograph shows the rear facade of one thirteen St. James Place as it currently stands. Neither the chimney or the small shed you see here are original, and we will be removing them. In these photographs, you can see the neighbors on both sides already have additions. Both of these were LPC-approved. At one fifteen St. James Place on the left, the addition is two stories, partial width and quite deep. At one eleven St. James Place on the right, the addition is one story, full width and shallower. As you will see in the coming slides, our objective was to negotiate between these two existing conditions while also adhering to various code requirements. This drawing shows the rear facades of one fifteen, one thirteen and one eleven St. James Place at present. In this elevation, we are indicating our proposed extension. It is two stories tall, made of dark brick with black metal railings. We will show you in the upcoming images that the left portion is of a comparable depth to the addition at one fifteen on the left and the right portion is of a comparable depth to the addition at one eleven on the right. This drawing is a cross-section of the existing townhouse. And here you see the cross-section of our proposal. As we mentioned earlier, one side of the extension is shallower while the other extends further. This negotiation between the existing additions at one eleven and one fifteen St. James Place is illustrated in this diagram, where you can see more clearly the L shape of our proposed addition. Some aspects of the shape are prescribed to us by various building codes. In this isometric drawing from our DOB filing, we indicate some of these code requirements. For instance, the deck is set back thirty feet from the rear lot, as this is as far back as we are allowed to build. The court at level one is designed to meet the minimum requirements of two hundred square feet with no dimension smaller than ten feet. This diagram indicates all of the existing row house extensions on our project's block. There are seventy-two existing row houses and thirty-two, thirty-six of them, I'm sorry, or fifty percent. There are seventy-two existing row houses and thirty-two, thirty-six of them, I'm sorry, or fifty percent already have additions. Of these thirty-six, twenty-one of the additions have two stories like ours. In this at axonometric drawn, you can again see how our proposal relates to our neighbors, this time in three dimensions. This slide indicates the view from Green Avenue, an adjacent street about ninety yards away. Technically, our extension will be visible through this gap in the buildings. In the existing view on the left, the addition at one fifteen St. James Place is partially discernible. In the middle image, we have included a rendering of our proposal. The two white rectangles frame enlarged views. The photograph at the right shows another existing extension that is closer to Green Avenue and more clearly visible. It is also clad in a dark material. Finally, here are existing and proposed plans of our project with the addition again highlighted in pink. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you very much for very clear presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony and we may have questions after that. Um, so if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I will turn it over to Sasha Sealy who will take us through the testimony.
Alrighty, thank you. Michelle Arbalo from Historic District Council. You should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Michelle, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You can begin your testimony. You have three minutes.
Hello, Michelle Arbalo for the Historic District Council. HTC finds this addition to the rear yard to be generally appropriate. That said, we believe that using brick to the exterior of the building would be more in keeping with its neighbors. We find the proportion of fenestration to masonry to be a bit open. A somewhat larger portion of masonry to class would be, we believe, more, a more elegant solution. Thank you.
All right, let me just take a glance back over. And I do not see any more hands raised for this item, so I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval of this application and we have received letters of support from the Fort Greene Association, Clinton Hill Society and Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning. I will turn it back over to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, so would you like to respond to the comments we've heard? I think that test the, uh, we have letters of support, but we know that we just heard testimony generally supporting the proposal, but questioning the proportions of the glazing. I don't know if that's something you'd like to address.
Sure, I'm gonna let my colleague Jess speak on this.
Okay, can you state your name for the, your full name for the record?
Okay, hi, my name is Jess Hinshaw. Um, I think when we looked at the various elevations, we wanted to treat these in two different ways. When you look straight on at the rear elevation, I think we do have some more historically sized windows with the three fixed windows. Actually, the casement. And then in this, yeah, so on the left-hand side, we're trying to have kind of more appropriately sized window bays with the, the masonry in between. On the right-hand side, we really wanted to create a feeling, uh, quite honestly, of an indoor-outdoor experience with a kitchen. Also, we felt that from the visible street view, uh, this amount of glazing would actually make the building kind of recede more into the vegetation and plants than if it were more masonry.
Okay, thank you. And I think there was also a comment about the stucco, but you're just patching the existing stucco.
That, that's correct.
All right. Um, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I'm gonna start to send you requests to unmute so we can go ahead and begin, uh, our discussion after closing the hearing. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed and we'll begin our discussion. And I want to thank the applicant for providing very clear presentation showing the immediate context, but also the larger context. And so, uh, this addition is, you know, uh, mediating between two, uh, different additions on either side of it. And, uh, the applicant did show other two-story additions within the block. And, um, with respect to the glazing, I think we can see that the commission has approved a variety of fenestration patterns on additions in this block just looking at the two adjacent additions. And we know that we have historically been more flexible about, um, open, uh, tran- more transparent fenestration designs in, uh, two-story rear yard additions. So, uh, with that, we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Sure, sure. Uh, um, on a whole, I can approve the project. There have been notes I took last night. I do agree that the, the window brick, window brick, uh, facade, it's a bit odd and it doesn't relate to the existing fabric, but I'm going to accept it. I think the, if they kept the windows similar to the, to the side windows, it would be fine too. But either I can accept that. And the, and the visibility from the corridor, I can accept that. I think it's from a side street and there's uh, other projects are visible, so I can accept that. The, if you go back to the, the slide, I was just looking at it. And, and where the, the exterior space, this, it seems to be the, there's a column missing. Maybe I'm wrong, but there's a column that holds up that, that exterior, um.
Deck?
Yeah, deck. So I don't know, but maybe, maybe I'm missing something. But anyway, um, I can accept the project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I agree. Uh, I, I do with what, uh, your comment, uh, Chair Carroll, about the presentation here gave us every comparison necessary uh, in terms of bulk height, massing, it's fine, the fenestration is fine, it's actually less than some of the projects we've seen. Um, and, um, and I think it's, uh, the visibility is, uh, not only partial, it's minor. So, uh, I'm, I'm okay with it as is.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree completely.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with other commissioners and I think it, uh, I like the way also that they fit in, uh, fit the project in, between its neighbors, which is an, you don't see that kind of effort often and I think it was well done in terms of, uh, the massing of the project. So I can approve it as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I think it's, I agree with what, what, uh, Everardo said. I think it is, it does have awkward aspects to it. Um, but I don't think those aspects modify its appropriateness. I think, I think the, uh, urban, you know, populations of this, uh, trying to negotiate between the two so, uh, elements that are already added in the back are, is it, is not an unreasonable approach to, uh, the massing within the, within this, uh, donut. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I think it's a thoughtful approach and, uh, I can approve it.
Commissioner Bland?
Um, I agree. I don't think I have much to add. I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree. I, I think it's very well done. I think the fact that the project, um, steps back, it doesn't run the full depth. Is, it, it helped, it actually, um, it's not, doesn't look bulky and it actually gives them a lot more flexibility in terms of how they use both floors. I think it's very smart.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I think we have a consensus to approve. Commissioner Jefferson, would you be comfortable reading the motion?
Sure, sure. In a matter of LPC dash twenty-two dash zero four nine seven six, one thirteen St. James Place, Clinton Hill Historic District. Application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's scale, style, material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Clinton Hill District. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the addition will not rise to the full height of the building thereby retaining a sense of building origin, original scale and massing, that the addition would not project further into the rear yard than the addition at the adjacent house. Or, uh, adjacent house. Uh, where am I? Or eliminate the presence, or eliminated the presence of a rear yard, that the L-shaped massing of, of the addition will be keeping with the various variation of massing at the rear. Where, but that the L-shaped massing of the addition will not, will be keeping with the variation of massing at the rear extension within the block and will help maintain a harmonious transition between the depth, the neighboring additions, that the addition will be keeping with the character of the surviving secondary facade in terms of its solid void ratio, material and level of ornamentation. That the dark finish of the brick of the addition will be in keeping with a variety of finishes found at secondary facade within this block. That the addition will only be partially visible from the public thoroughfare from a limited viewpoint at a significant distance and the design and detail of the addition will largely indiscernible with the varied context of the surrounding rear facades and extension. And, and the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historical character of the buildings and the Clinton Hill Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin? Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-two dash zero two six seven two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block three twenty-six, lot twenty-two. Nineteen Tompkins Place in the Cobble Hill Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style row house built in the eighteen forties and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Uh, Matthew, you now have control of the presentation. You can, perfect. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you very much. So my name is Matthew Ransom. I am joined by my colleague Benjamin Huckberg. We are from Overhead Architecture and today we are presenting the non-visible horizontal enlargement at nineteen Tompkins Place. Uh, so maybe perhaps a little bit surprisingly, these three photos depict the same building. So this is the nineteen forties tax lot photo of nineteen Tompkins. The front facade here as it is today, you can see that, that not a lot has changed. And then here at the rear, uh, you can see that there is already an existing rear yard extension. It's partial width, it's two stories tall. And the proposal that we have before you today is the non-visible enlargement, um, of this extension. We are proposing to, um, widen it to take the full width of the building and we are, um, extending it to the rear yard by about seven feet. We'll see this in more detail in just a moment. Um, this is just a brief overview of the, of the donut, of the block itself. Um, it's a very heterogeneous street. Um, so we're abutted by Court Street here, so there is a commercial district on the backside of our lot. Um, and then there's just a wide variety in terms of the housing stock on Tompkins Place itself. There's a mix of townhouses, apartment buildings, um, and I suppose duplexes. Um, these colors denote, uh, the existing extensions that are in the block. Uh, the green denotes one story, orange is two, and then, uh, blue is three. And we'll see this in more detail, but I'd like to call out here that, um, just down the street from us, twenty-five Tompkins, there is a three-story, um, full-width extension. Um, and actually underway now at fifteen Tompkins, if you can see my cursor, um, there is, there's also a three-story extension. So there is precedent. Um, and this is the, this is Tompkins as it is today. You can, again, you'll see this in more detail, but there's a large wood deck that extends about halfway into the rear yard and then a partial width extension. Um, and then what we're proposing is, is basically just widening the enlargement and extending it back by, by seven feet. Um, here in just a little bit more detail of the block again, um, so fifteen Tompkins is the one that I mentioned to, two doors down. We at nineteen Tompkins are illustrated here in orange. Uh, so it is a three-story extension, full width, and then just a few doors down, I guess three doors down. At twenty-five Tompkins, we have a three-story, um, full-width extension. This is just the landscape of, of, uh, the interior of the donut. So we are here at the center of this nineteen Tompkins, looking left, that's the three-story double-width extension. We are coming actually, uh, no further into the rear lot than, uh, than this one here. So we kind of pan right, you can see that our neighbor, our immediate neighbor at seventeen Tompkins, uh, has a small addition. And then just a door down, um, this is actually a renovation that's underway, so presumably it was recently approved, uh, before the commission. Fifteen Tompkins, and again, it's, it's a double width and, um, three-story tall, or sorry, single width, uh, and three-story tall extension. Uh, looking back from our house, so again, there's twenty-five Tompkins. Uh, and then here we can see, uh, the commercial abutment, um, along Court Street. So, you know, it's like I said, it's very heterogeneous block. There's, there's a lot going on. There's extensions, there's tall apartment buildings and so forth. It's a really dynamic block interior. Um, and you can also see just the, the nature of the, the rear deck. So, um, we'll see that in a little bit more detail in elevation in just a moment. Um, and again, there's fifteen Tompkins. So what are we proposing? So here at the top, this is the existing condition at nineteen Tompkins. You can see here's the wood deck that I mentioned going about halfway into the rear yard. It is a very deep rear yard, um, even after the existing extension, there's fifty-two feet. Um, and then here you can see in, in light gray, that is the existing extension that I mentioned. It's about nine feet deep and it's about, say, half the width of, of the building itself. What we are proposing is widening the extension. We are, I should say, we are completely removing this extension and then the new, the proposed extension would be the full width of the building and it would be seven feet, uh, deeper than, than the one that's there now, which would still leave about forty-five feet to the rear lot line. Um, so it does maintain, um, it does maintain the, the kind of present, um, volumetric feeling of, of the rear yard. Um, and, and our feeling is that by removing this deck, it's actually making it a, a little bit less present in, in the block itself. I think that's borne out by the photos and we'll see that again in, in just a moment in elevation. This is just to, to kind of further illustrate, uh, the look and feel of the donut. Um, after this proposed extension, uh, would be incorporated into the block. So here we are at nineteen Tompkins and you can see it's, it's very heterogeneous block interior. Um, here we can see with a little bit more detail, uh, the proposed extension. So as I mentioned, the twenty-five Tompkins, that's the, the three-story full-width extension, two doors down. Um, it comes about nineteen feet into the yard where it's sixteen and then our neighbors beside, uh, are thirteen feet. And we're still maintaining quite a deep backyard at, at forty-eight feet. Um, this is a section through the existing, um, existing extension. You can see now a little better, um, just the impact that this wood deck has, extends very deep in the backyard. Um, it's got a really heavy presence and then of course, the bright yellow extension is here, it's about nine feet deep. Um, I should also mention that there's a cut line through this section, so if we were to see this at scale, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but the, the backyard would continue beyond. Um, what we are proposing again is, is a seven-foot lengthening of that extension. It's gonna be full width and then, uh, we're proposing just a, proposing just a simple stair, uh, out to the rear yard. Um, and the intent with all of this is, is to, is basically to stitch the, the building back together again to make the, the extension feel part and parcel of the house itself and thereby make the house feel, uh, like it's part and parcel of the block and to better blend with the neighborhood. Here's a comparative analysis in the two sections. So we are proposing completely removing the existing extension, the wood deck, and then here's the, the proposed extension there. In elevation, this is the existing condition at nineteen Tompkins. Um, you've got the three-story extension there, two doors down, um, and the other one was just out of view. And then this is the, the proposed extension. Um, you can see, you know, some decisions have been made in, in the design of fenestration, um, to sort of provide something that's in better keeping with, with the, the texture of the block than perhaps the bright yellow vinyl clad extension is now. Um, and, and that's, that's really what this is all about, is just to kind of stitch the house back together again and just kind of really unfold, better unfold the house into the neighborhood. Here we can see this is the proposed demolition of the extension and then you can see the widened, uh, proposed extension here. The next slide, just a brief overview of how this materializes. Um, so the choices that we're making now are just about, um, how to, how to better blend it, right? So we're, we're, we're working with earth toned, like gray. So we're, we're working with earth toned, light grays, et cetera, to just really keep it with minimal impact on the block. And that's it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time. Oh wait, we have one. Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
I think you might be muted.
Just, yeah, accept the request to unmute.
I'm sorry. On the second floor, where you have the railing, is that deck accessible or is it?
It is, it is. Yes, thank you for asking. So we are dropping these two window sills to provide the ability to walk out onto the extension, so hence the handrail across. We've been told that this is part of a staff level review. I'm happy to talk more about it now, but, but yes, we're, we're proposing to, to drop the sills and to have a, a walkout over the new extension.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Right. So to be clear, should the commission approve the two-story rear yard addition, the staff later could approve dropping the sills at the two windows and installing the railing.
Okay, like.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right. So we will move to testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Sasha Sealy to take us through that testimony.
Ready, thank you. Michelle Arbelu from Historic District Council, you should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Michelle, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic. State your name for the record and you can begin your testimony. You have three minutes.
Hello, Michelle Arbelu, or the Historic District Council. HTC finds this addition to be appropriate, but would ask the commission to require brick as the exterior facade material. This will blend more favorably with its neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Glance over, Christina Conroy from Victorian Society, New York. All right, Christine, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual landmarks, interiors and civic art. Although this theater post-dates the period of interest for.
Christina, this, this is for 19 Tompkins Place.
Whoops. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I am on, okay, I'll see you later.
Yes, you're on the next item. Don't worry.
Hey, sorry guys.
No worries. All right, let me just take a glance back over and I do not see any more hands raised for this item. So I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Void Six recommends approval with the condition that the railing at the top of the extension be simple wrought iron painted black and that the stair railing from the parlor floor to the yard be simple wrought iron painted black. And I will turn it back over to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much, Sasha. Okay, so we heard testimony about the material of the addition and while the railing could be eligible for staff level, there were comments about the, from the community board about the railing for the lower decks. Would you like to address either of those?
Sure. So I, I think we, during the community board meeting, you know, it came up that actually this is, this is one of the sticking points that they have often with these buildings. That, you know, there's, there are often proposed novel designs for stair railings and handrails and so forth. And they're of the mind, as I understand it, that it's, it's far better to just, you know, just be in keeping with, with the rest of the neighborhood, to, to not try and reinvent the wheel. That's completely fine. I think our intent in, with, with the color palette here is just to, just to get it all to a certain level, just to kind of lighten everything up and get it to receive a bit. So our intent with having the lighter, like a lighter gray paint color of the guardrail at the top of the parapet was just to get it to blend in with the, with the extension and with the, the house behind it, rather than standing out as a, as a decorative piece of metal. You know, I think if, if you all agree that it ought to be black, then obviously it's not a problem for us. It's, you know, it's more about the extension itself, but in terms of the decisions that we were making with respect to materials, it was all just to, to just kind of lighten everything and thereby kind of minimize the impact on the character of the block.
Okay, and your upper floors are stucco, so the lower floors were intended to relate to that.
Yeah, it would be the self-same color.
Okay. And are there other stucco clad additions? I mean, I know your current addition is a yellow vinyl sided addition, but are there other stucco clad additions?
There are, and we can see that. I, I think it's slide six, I believe, maybe a little bit later in the presentation. There, there is precedent. And in fact, I think 15 Tompkins going to now is, I believe, a stucco extension, though I might be proven wrong if we, we've got the photo record here, so we can just revert back to that. So it, it does appear that, I mean, our immediate neighbor appears to be painted brick on the right side. There, there are other stucco additions. If you see 25 Tompkins off to the far left-hand side, that is a brick extension. But I think it stands out in the block for hav, for, for having that material.
Okay, yeah. And I, and I will say the commission has certainly approved stucco clad additions in other rear yard contexts. Okay, commissioners, any final questions? Right, I'm starting to send you requests on mute so we can move to our discussion. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. This is also a two-story rear yard addition that is setback further, setback from the plane of the current deck, which puts setback deeper than the current addition by seven feet, but less than the current deck. But these are deep yards, so it leaves a 48-foot rear yard. And I think we've heard largely supportive testimony, but some comments on materials, really the finishes, the materials. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Gustafson, would you start this one?
Yeah, sure. This, this, to me, this seems like quite an easy one. I, I think that it's appropriate as is. I think the demolition of what's there isn't any kind of problem at all. The height is, is appropriate at two stories. The, 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 the depth is consistent with what else is out there. I don't have a problem with the materials. I think it's, it's fine as is. But if everybody else wants to go another direction, I'm, I'm sure I'll be okay with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree with Commissioner Gustafson again and think that it is appropriate on every level as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I also agree with the, the two previous commissioners that I think that the, you know, stucco is an appropriate material. You know, the railings in black might be a little more traditional, but I don't think, I don't really have a problem with a different color of the railing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
No disagreement here. I think it's modest and appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Appropriate as presented.
Commissioner Bland?
I fall right in with everybody else. It's appropriate as presented.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I think it's appropriate. I actually hadn't thought about the railing. I think I would have a slight preference for gray or black, but I can go with it as it is.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate, and I think the railings could be gray.
Okay. All right. So I think we have enough to vote for it as is. The applicant can continue to think about the railing, darkening the railing in color if they wish, but I think we have enough to support it as is. So we'll go ahead and make that motion. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC 22-02672, 19 Tompkins Place in the Cobble Hill Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Cobble Hill Historic District. I recommend approval noting that the demolition of the existing rear yard addition will not remove any significant architectural features, that the proposed year yard, rear yard addition will not be visible for many public thoroughfare, that the addition will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby retaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing and relationship with other houses in the row, that the proposed two-story addition will maintain the height of the existing addition and will not overwhelm this or the neighboring buildings, some of which have taller additions, that the depth of the addition will be consistent with other large rear yard additions existing within the block in, and will, and will not diminish the central green space, that the design of the rear yard addition featuring a stucco finish to match the existing rear facade and multi-light metal window and door assemblies will harmonize with the house and other rear yard additions within the block and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the house or the historic district.
Right. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Thank you all very much.
The next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 22-06827, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1103, lot 27. A neo-renaissance style theater building designed by Harrison G. Wiseman and Magnuson and Kleiner Associates and built in 1928. And the application is to install solar panels. I don't know that I mentioned the address, so I'll say it again if I didn't, or if I did. 187 to 191 Prospect Park West Sanders, now Pavilion Theater in the Park Slope Historic District Extension.
Hey commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Angel, you now have control of the presentation. You can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Angel Ion. I'm the principal of Ion Studio Architectural Preservation and I'm delighted to be here to be presenting the photovoltaic rooftop installation at the Nighthawk Prospect Park. The Nighthawk Prospect Park is on Prospect Park West. It's within the boundaries of the Prospect Park Historic District Extension and just across the street from the Park Slope Historic District on the corner of 14th Street and Prospect Park West. This is, apologies, this is a historic photograph of the original building circa 1928 and its original incarnation as the Sanders Theater, as is still shown on the original marquee. What's important about this photograph is just that it tells that the building as it is to, today, and as we know, it has pretty much very consistent with its original incarnation, that the, the larger, large bulk of the building has been, from its original base, has been in place and almost on alter over the years. Here, subsequent photograph of the building evolution over the years in the 1940s, you can see that the building remained pretty much the same than, than its original appearance from the 1920s. And in 1980, tax photographs show pretty much the same with the exception of some changes in the marquee that had been redone to show the building in, in its incarnation at that time at the Sanders Theater with a, a new marquee. This is the building as it appeared to be a few years ago. It had been at that point of the, in the seventies, it was converted into the pavilion and the marquee again suffered an alteration, but other than that, the building remained pretty much intact. It was about that time, 2015, when the commission reviewed and approved and proposed alteration to the building that included not only the installation of new windows and the north facade, but a rooftop addition visible from the street from both the north facade on 14th Street, but also from the roundabout. The application at the time also included a new building adjacent lot. This application was not pursued, but it's a relevant precedent that we just wanted to note. As we all know, the building was converted in 2018 to the current Nighthawk Cinema. At that time, there were a couple of alterations regarding, regarding to the marquee and the extension of the elevator bulkhead that were also approved by the commission at public hearing. What's important is just that this photograph shows the existing roof that is visible from the, the roundabout. This is not something that you can see in the original photograph, but it's, it's a very visible roof and this bulkhead is also in existing condition that was also shown on the 1940 photograph. Apologies again. This is the building in its current. Okay, sorry, I'm having trouble with.
Is it delayed for you, Angel?
Yes, I, I, I just have to give it some time. Okay. All right, apologies.
No worries.
In its current configuration, we are in the middle of doing repair work that had been approved at staff level on the south facade and the, the front facade of the building. So there's scaffolding and in place. But the building remains the same. The next slide show the building roof on the left, you see of, of the view, a view looking east towards Prospect Park and it showing the existing building, the existing roof configuration. In essence, there are four, for, this is a segmented roof with four sides. And what we're planning to do is just install photovoltaics on these two middle segments of the roof that are a little bit flatter on that steeper side facing, facing south on, on, on that you can barely see on this inside of the photograph. The photograph to the right is just the same roof looking west when the building pretty much, and that segmented roof kind of ends at this location and then the roof configuration changes. This is the roof plan showing the proposed, the proposed installation. This is a commercial type installation, photovoltaic installation. It's a little bit different than what you would see on, on the typical residential installation. The panels are larger, they are about 90 inches long, slightly larger than the panels that you would see on a typical residential installation. And the, this is a windowless building with a, a very high electricity use for the commercial kitchen and also all the existing six rooms. So this is an installation that will really help to ameliorate the electrical loads on the building. And, and we're trying to do, maximize the use of the existing roof as possible to provide the new photovoltaic installation. The, these are the existing and proposed elevations showing how we're planning to, to, to lay out the photovoltaics pretty much on this flatter roof that I mentioned before, but also on the south-facing roof of the, the segmented roof. We're trying to follow the existing roof line and, and trying to stay, to keep, to retain the, the proposed photovoltaic panels just as close as possible to the existing roof so that they are not as visible. This is the north facade, existing and proposed north facade, showing how those panels on the northern segment of that roof, there will be slightly visible. But there will be no insulation on the steeper side on the north side. This is the south facade showing that we're proposing to install panels on both sides of this existing bulkhead on the steeper side of the roof, but also on the flatter part of the roof as well. And again, these are section, building sections looking in the opposite direction, showing the photovoltaic panel layout very close to the existing roof profile. This is the. This is the photovoltaic installation detail that we're proposing. And in essence, we're proposing an extensive amount of short supports to try to keep those panels as close as possible to the, the existing roof. It's about ten and a quarter inch maximum height, the maximum height that those panels will have above the replacement roof surface. These are photographs of the modules that we are proposing. And, and, and the photograph on the right just shows those modules installed at a different building in Brooklyn, not with the same configuration that we're proposing here. This is just provided just for illustrative purposes, just so that you have a sense of the look and feel of those modules as they have been used in a similar, in a different location. A variety of views that we'll be showing you now, just so that you get a sense of the visibility of this proposed installation from various viewpoints. Let's just start with a view from across the street from the building across on the opposite side of Prospect Park West. If you were to just look at the building straight on, given that you have this very tall parapet, you will not be able to see the photovoltaic panels at all, so there will be no change and there will be no, there will not be visible from this location. You will have to move closer to the roundabout to start seeing that bulkhead roof that I was talking about initially, that that's when the roof start to be shown and then the proof, the proposed work is just to pretty much cover most of that south-facing roof with the photovoltaic installation. Another view, if you're back from the roundabout, showing the full roof with the proposed photovoltaic installation covering most of that area. And this is a view standing in the middle of the roundabout that shows the building in, with more clarity and when it's closer to have maximum visibility where you can see the existing roof more clearly exposed and the proposed photovoltaic configuration at that area. And this is a closer view into the roundabout showing now, passing the trees and showing now the full south facade and the full building roof. And I render showing how that photovoltaic configuration will look like from that area once you get into the roundabout and past the trees. We're showing the existing condition with the scaffold and I render showing the proposed photovoltaic installation and all the restorative work that has already been approved by the commission and staff. And then this is another view on Prospect Park West, across the street on the side park, on the park side of the, the, the street that shows that it, there is one particular spot where if you, if you stand there, you will be able to see the, the edge of the northernmost installation that it's about, as I said before, ten and a quarter inch above the roof surface, but that will be visible at that location from the sidewalk. And I will stop here.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to testimony. You're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I will turn it over to Sasha to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. Christina Conroy from Victorian Society, New York, you should be receiving a request now. Okay, Christina, I see you've accepted my request, please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay. Morning again Commissioners. Okay, I'm still Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York City in nineteen sixty-six, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our nineteenth and early twentieth century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual landmarks, interiors and civic art. Although this theater postdates the period of interest for the Victorian Society, the roof changes proposed have their most significant impact on the adjacent Victorian era Prospect Park scenic landmark. Now, the small portions of the roof that project into view are visible only from some distance and appear to be painted by tumulus material and don't contribute to the architectural character of the building or historic district. The increase in visibility caused by the proposed slight increase in height and the substitution of photovoltaic panels for the utilitarian roofing material do not seem to us to affect the character of the building, call undue attention or detract from the quality of views from Prospect Park and the surrounding streets. Therefore, in this unusual case, the Victorian Society supports the proposed addition of visible photovoltaic panels. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me take a glance back over the attendees and see if we have anyone else who wishes to speak on this item. And I do not see any hands raised, so I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six recommends approval of this application, and I'll turn it back over to you Chair Carol.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Anhel's very supportive testimony, but I don't know if there's anything you'd like to address or any final comments you'd like to make.
No, except that we've gone through we went through a lot of deal to try to minimize the visibility of this very visible installation and, and the way that we're trying to do so is just by trying to keep it very close to, to the roof surface. If it, if this were to be any other building, it would have a very different type of support. We've been a little bit closer supported by larger beams of donage. And in this case, it's a little bit counterintuitive, we're adding more support just so that we can keep it flatter and closer to the roof surface. And I think this is, this is a really interesting case also and that allows all of us to kind of like strike the right balance between preservation and sustainability and doing an alteration to the building that is visible, but hopefully appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioners, if there are no final questions, we'll start to go ahead and unmute so we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. Oh, Commissioner Jefferson, did you have a question? Please go ahead. Commissioner Jefferson, just accept the request to unmute.
Thank you again. The ball spot on the right-hand image at the front, or at the front, could that be covered up by photovoltaic? In the elevation, you see? Yeah.
You're not the only one who doesn't remember how to unmute, so. We need to leave a six-foot clearance from the building, the front facade for the fire department to get access into the roof. And that is the reason why that has not been covered.
Thank you, thank you. I.
Great. Any other final questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any other final questions, so we'll make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
We'll move.
Thank you, and Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so we have recently seen a number of applications for solar panels or photovoltaic panels on buildings, various buildings in our historic districts. This has, you know, it's interesting, as a theater, the back portion of it is, is typical of theaters, very utilitarian and it has this sort of hip angled roof, which in some ways lends itself to the angles needed for the solar panels. So it's an interesting application here and I think as, as Anhel, the applicant pointed out, it's I think this is a nice example as we think about how preservation and sustainability goals can be very aligned and work closely together. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you begin this one?
Yes. Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation, which I thought was so clear and and interesting and it's, and it's very interesting as well to see this amount of kind of surface, that this amount of square footage of photovoltaics, this kind of scale and also on an institutional building. Very interesting to see. I absolutely agree with the applicant that, that this does in fact, or with, agree with his intention to strike a balance and think that in fact it does strike that balance, as you said Chair Carol, between preservation, sustainability and the kind of the marriage of the two on lots of levels, the retention of the building, that, you know, the, the re, the use again of the building, you know, rather than losing the building, finding a way to bring it into the future, accept the visibility because, and all of the efforts that they've made to allow for it to be as flat as possible, that kind of extra work that was done in order to build structure for it to be flat. But it, I mean, it reads very intentionally and I think that the intention does not detract from the historic quality of the building. It kind of, again, takes it into the future in a positive way.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, these are allowing these climate change, you know, additions to buildings is, is very important. Obviously, our mission is to decide whether they detract from the building. And in this case, I think that it is, as the Victorian Society testimony indicated, I think that it is actually fine and will not detract from, from this historic building.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Wouldn't agree more. I think that I look at solar panels like, like I look at ADA ramps. These are signs of our progress. These are signs of our progress as a city and a civilization towards a better way of living. And so I think they're, they're actually lovely to look at. I also think that it's, as has been noted, I think it's wonderful that that this building is, is finding a way into the future, which rather few outer, you know, kind of non-Times Square movie theaters have been able to do. And I think fostering the use along with the structure is a benefit to the community and a benefit to the city. My partner would kill me if I didn't say that the building in the foreground certainly is, is a contribution as well, but we're not talking about that. So I think it's totally appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I, I pass by this roof a couple of times a week just walking around and it's possibly the most hideous roof in Park Slope. I love seeing it covered with something that will benefit the theater and the neighborhood and civilization. Good job, Anhel.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Well, there's not much more to add to the kudos for Anhel on this one. And, you know, it actually improves the look of the, of the roof appreciably. Never mind the good for society that it's doing as well, which is more important, I think, in this case, but it does improve the look, cleans it up. Great, great.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I happen to agree, I want to just add on to what Commissioner Devonshire and Bland said because I see this, this building all the time and the roof is a little bit of an eyesore and it's, it's so nice to know that they are doing something that it's not going to have visually a negative impact, it's very discreet. And that in terms of renewable energy, it's, it's going to be a very, very positive contribution to the building and our society. And I want to also just say that this theater over, has had a lot of ups and downs over the past, I mean, at least twenty years. And it's so heartening to know that, and I've seen the progress being made on so many fronts and that this is yet another positive step forward in a neighborhood institution that people frequent and rely on, so.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with all the comments.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, appropriate as is.
Okay, so I think again, we have a consensus to approve. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make the motion?
Yes. In the matter of LPC two-two zero six eight two seven, one eighty-seven, one ninety-one Prospect Park West Sanders now Pavilion Theater, Park Slope Historic District. A neo-renaissance style theater building designed by Harrison G. Wiseman and Magnuson and Kleiner Associates and built in nineteen twenty-eight, the application is to install solar panels. I note the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District Extension. I also note the visibility in the installation of solar panels on pitched roofs may be unavoidable in cases such as this one due to code requirement, light conditions and the necessity of panels to face south for proper performance and economic viability. And that large commercial-grade panels are required at commercial buildings to achieve sufficient performance and economic viability. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural or historic feature of the building, features of the building. That the solar panels will only be seen from public thoroughfares in minimal views above the primary facade and against the background of the utilitarian roof in views on and above the south side of the roof. That the uniform size, placement and finish of the panels set low and oriented to the pitch of the existing visible roof will have a discreet presence as seen within the context of a variety of rooftop accretions on this building. That the installation will be reversible in the long term and clearly discernible as a modern assembly providing renewable energy that supports the sustainability of the historic building. Proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Park Slope Historic District Extension.
Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
The next item is public hearing item number five, LPC twenty-two dash zero six six eight one. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block fifty-one ninety, lot thirty-two, three sixty-two East Twenty-Fifth Street and East Twenty-Fifth Street Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival style rowhouse designed by Glue Croft and Glue Croft and built in circa nineteen oh nine to twelve. The application is to replace a door.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing, the staff will be walking you through the presentation. Caroline, you now have control of the presentation, you just need to click on your screen and then you may begin.
Thank you, Abby. Good morning Commissioners, Caroline Passion, Preservation Staff. The application before you today is the placement of the existing door at the front facade that was present at the time of designation. This rowhouse is located on the west side of the block between Clarendon Road and Avenue D. It is one of a row in twenty-eight on this side of the street in this historic district that was designated in November of twenty twenty. The original doors of this rowhouse and the other houses within this row and within this district were wooden glass double-leaf doors seen in this historic tax photograph. And by the time of designation, the historic doors had been replaced. So this door replacement is being reviewed by the Commissioners today because the new doors will not match the historic doors in terms of configuration, materials and details. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing aluminum door and to install a fiberglass panel door which will feature a door, I'm sorry, a window and then the side panels, the side metal panels and infill of the top will be cladded over with extruded aluminum panning. And both the door and the panning will be all painted in a black finish, it'll be a factory applied painted finish to match. This is a rendering of the proposed door, there will be panels with a window at the top of the door. And this is just a few street scapegoats to show the existing doors at the houses on this block and across the street within the district. And this is just a few street scapegoats to show, uh, the existing doors at the houses on this block and across the street within the district. Uh, most of the historic doors, uh, had been replaced by the time of designation. Um, and they all feature, uh, single leaf doors with, um, infill within the existing openings. Uh, and so Commissioners, uh, please note that the daughter of the homeowner, Terry Simmons, is here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Caroline. So Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? All right, I don't see any questions right now, so we'll move to testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I will turn it over to Sasha Sealy to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. Michelle Arbalo from Historic District Council, you should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Michelle, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record.
Michelle Arbalo for the Historic District Council. The pair of wood and glass doors shown in the tax photo and in evidence on other buildings on this block is the appropriate approach, approach for placing these doors. We would note that the strength of glass that is now standard in exterior doors should provide sufficient security for the owner of this handsome building. We would also note that the inner single wood opaque door with side lights could provide an added layer of security to the entry. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Conroy from Victorian Society, New York. You should be receiving a request from me now. Okay Christina, I see you've accepted my request. Just unmute your mic and state your name for the record and then you can begin your testimony.
Okay, good morning again Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, there are fifty-six houses built by the same developer in this district, all of a similar size, scale, height and detailing. A site visit by BSNY revealed that twenty of the fifty-six still have paired doors, most historic and most with large areas of glass. We believe that this was the original design for all the houses. Now, this appears to be the first application in this district for door replacement. The results of the Commission's determination will set a precedent here, either a good one or a bad one. The appropriate solution is to replicate the historic wood paired glazed doors. If there are concerns about privacy or security, shades, obscure glass or interior grills can be added. There may be a single leaf door solution that could be appropriate, if not ideal, but it would require a door of the right style and height and a much better treatment of a side and top panel infill than the plain aluminum cladding proposed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me just take a glance back over the attendees. See if we have any more hands raised. And I do not see anyone else who wishes to speak on this item. So I'll just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board seventeen recommends approval for this application and I will turn it back over to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you very much, Sasha. Okay, so I, I, I think I just want to clarify something and then I, I'd like to ask the applicant representative, she'd like to respond to the comments, but the, um, uh, we do know that the historic configuration would have been a double leaf door. In this case, the applicant is only proposing to replace the operable door portion and they are keeping the infringement and re-cladding it. So, the, what is before us is not a full replacement. It's a replacement of just the operable piece and then how the infringement is treated. Um, and so I think, uh, you know, we would be in, with a limited scope like that, we would be looking at the door and then that treatment. Uh, but I'd like to ask the applicant if, uh, she'd like to, uh, respond or add any additional comments. See applicant here, Caroline?
Yes, Ms. Simmons, uh, I see you're unmuted, so you can speak. If you'd like to add any comments.
And if, I, I don't want to move on without giving you that opportunity, but, so if you, whether or not you'd like to speak, just let us know what, if you prefer to speak or not. Ms. Simmons? I wonder if there's a technology problem.
We had a, um, we practiced in Zoom yesterday and there was a little bit of trouble, so it, that might be the case, even though uh, I could see that she is present here in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, all right, so, um, do you have an email, an email address or a way to reach out to her?
I'm gonna reach out now.
Okay, great. I just want her to have the opportunity to explain the rationale and choices. Even if she emails you her, her feedback or texts her feedback to you, we can relay it.
Okay. Okay, uh, she, so the daughter of the homeowner, Terry Simmons, um, has said that uh, she just wanted to say it's just a door and nothing else changes. Um, she also said that she, um, did unmute, but that, um, we just can't hear her at the moment.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. And Commissioners, are there any final questions? All right, I'm gonna start to send you requests to unmute so we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Okay, and Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And you opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion and, um, you know, this is, as you know, a district that, that we just recently designated and it has, uh, uh, in, an incredible sense of place by virtue of its really consistent bow-fronted row houses. Um, and they're consistent in their size and detailing mater, uh, materials and um, and it, it really is quite striking how consistent they are. Even though half of them have replacement doors. Um, and so in this case, uh, and I would say there are also some other interesting uh, chain, even historically, some buildings had balustrades and some didn't, and that's still the case today, although less have the balustrade on top. Um, but otherwise, it's sort of the primary consistency is really driven by these rows of uh, limestone facades with these curved bays that project. Um, and so, um, what we're seeing today is a proposal to replace the door and as we explained, the scope is really limited to just the door, not the infringement. So while we know the historic condition would be a double leaf door and that would be, uh, approved at staff level, this is before us today because they're not able to do a double leaf door within the size of the opening. So we'll be discussing the door and then the treatment of the infringement around it. Um, so we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, do you, would you like to start this one?
Uh, yes, um, I, I, of course, I would like to see, uh, you know, uh, something much closer to the original door. At the same time, what's being presented to us is the replacement of an existing door with a door that will be, uh, I think working with the staff could be more appropriate than it currently is. So while the ideal would be, uh, something else, I think that, uh, replacing the door, working with the staff on the profiles and, and, and the surround and so forth would achieve, uh, a better condition that in the, if someone in the future is doing a more extensive renovation could be replaced. And I don't think it will prevent us in other situations where someone may be replacing more of the surround, uh, from going, uh, back much closer to the original. So I can pres, uh, approve it as long as, uh, the applicant works with his staff on the, uh, the trim and the moldings and the, you know, the presentation of the door in general.
Great, thank you. And I think, you know, the fiberglass door will have a factory applied painted finish, so that will, I think the change in ma, in that material will not be perceptible, but I agree the flat infringement could be enhanced with some profile or molding that could be worked out with the staff. Um, Commissioner Goldblum?
Um, I agree with what Diana said. I, I think that this is a step in the right direction. It's not, I, uh, um, a, a restoration of the historic condition, but one sees a lot of uh, replacement doors in, in buildings of this vintage. And, um, I think that uh, the way that the infringement is trimmed out will go a long way towards, um, contributing to the, uh, ac, not accuracy, but the, the historic appropriateness of, of the entire installation. One thing that I would suggest that they look at because of the thickness of that surround is adding, uh, decorative trim that's consistent with the, uh, style of the building. Uh, and also trying to minimize the inset of the door. Um, when you buy a door like that, it usually comes pre-hung on a frame and you can pick the thickness of the frame. So, um, I would suggest that they try to pick something that's, that's very, uh, shallow. And, uh, that allows the door and whatever infringement details are worked out with the staff to be relatively, um, flush. Uh, it'll just make for a better looking installation that's more kind typical of, of historic installations and also closer to what was there originally, which were two panels that were in the same plane with each other.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with Michael's comments.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I'm sorry, I can't get with the program here. Um, I appreciate that this is a new district and et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, but I think we would never approve something like this in Greenwich Village or Upper East Side or Upper West Side. I'm sorry to say these things, but I just, I find it, uh, fiberglass door with pre-finished paint on it is, that looks like a suburban house right out of a catalog. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get with the program.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
Um, I have to agree with Fred. Um, you know, I, I was thinking, well, I could say working with staff, but I'm not quite sure it would bring the door and the surround to a place that makes sense in this new historic district and it's being done now. It's not going to be changed within the next two years, so I would, um, I, I feel that it needs to be closer to what we would normally approve.
Okay, I mean, I, I think that, um, short of being able to do a double door, w- we would probably focus on the details of that infringement. And I think that's something that I'd have confidence in the staff being able to work out. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I agree with Fred and, um, I, I think that if the door didn't have that curve transom, I think it's a transom, I'm not sure. I mean, if it was square perhaps, but most of my agreement is with Fred and the Victorian Society.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I'm in the bland camp here. Um, the, uh, uh, doors are going to be critical on this block. It is, um, absolutely a, a tremendous, um, uh, grouping of buildings. And, um, a- and, and when you walk down that street, um, that's the thing that catches your eye. That's the inconsistency that catches your eye. Um, and so, um, I, I, I think Fred is right. It's good, we would not have, we would not accept this in, in another district that has similar buildings with such consistency, so, um, I, I can't accept it here.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Uh, I think I agree with Commissioner Bland, but I'm wondering if, um, what exactly the, you know, wh- what we what we would potentially improve in other situations. I, I think the, I mean, I think it should be a war, but I, I think that the bigger problem is the transom and the transom seems, um, sort of, a- as, as Commissioner Bland said, off the shelf and slightly suburban. And so maybe if it were to follow a little bit more the, the form of some of the other transoms, either much bigger or much smaller, but rectangular, um, that might be helpful. I, I mean, I, I, I do want to ask you, Chair Carroll, what your thoughts are about, about the fiberglass itself and the extent to which we, we are wanting to consider that as a material for other, other districts.
Yeah, I mean, we have approved it, not a lot, but we have approved it, um, at, on doors. Um, I mean, I can remember, uh, one or two times in Sunnyside Gardens where we've approved it as a front door material in lieu of wood. Um, and we've certainly also approved it as a window replacement material. So I think the finish is pro, uh, probably very critical and understanding or being able to sort of read the, or not perceive the change in material. But I think it's something that, you know, perhaps a finished sample might be helpful next time.
And just to add, I mean, it will have simulated joinery and paneling and things like that, but uh, it can be brush painted on top of a, a factory prime coat or other finish. So in that sense, it may not be so different in terms of its outer appearance seen from, more of a distance from the street as any other material that's, that's brush painted.
Have we ever approved th- th- this sort of sized door in a, in fiberglass in, in another district, like in Brooklyn Heights or?
Well, th- this sized door is not actually that different from the ones in Sunnyside Gardens, which were also single doors. Um, we have, so, you know, we have done fiberglass on this sized door. I would say though for, um, I don't, I don't know about every other Brownstone Historic District, but I would say that we certainly have dealt with the issue of not being able to return to a double leaf door because the scope was limited to, uh, you know, the single operable door replacement and um, and, you know, we've dealt with the treatment to, around the infringement in those instances.
Yeah, so I guess my perspective is, um, i- if others could agree to the fiberglass, again, it's not my, um, what I think is most appropriate, but uh, I do think that it's the transom that's the problem and needs to change or go away entirely.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll take no action today and we'll ask the applicant to continue to work with the staff on, um, the, the detailing and particularly focusing on the infringement in the transom area. And, um, and maybe also thinking about providing a finished sample, um, and exploring a brushed finish on top of the factory applied finish to see how that looks and we'll have them back when they're ready. So we'll take no action today. Right, thank you. Move to the next item.
All right, the next item is public hearing item number six, LPC twenty-two dash zero seven two one zero. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block eight twenty-eight, Lots twenty and nineteen. This is twenty-one to twenty-three, West Twenty-Sixth Street and the Madison Square North Historic District. A Queen Anne style office building designed by Thomas Stent and built in eighteen eighty to eighty-one. And a colonial revival style office building originally built in eighteen eighty to eighty-one and altered circa nineteen twenty-two by Peabody Wilson and Brown. And the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Um, Ethan, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. Perfect. Um, you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Uh, please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Uh, good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Benjamin Bischoff. I'm the applicant and I have Ethan Pomerance, who is the project manager for the project. Um, as summarized by Corey, the project involves the renovation and expansion of two existing three-story office buildings at twenty-one to twenty-three, West Twenty-Sixth Street to be combined into a single building to serve as the office and headquarters of our client. Um, the buildings have significant history as they were originally constructed for John Jacob and Vincent Astor to serve as the offices for their respective The buildings have significant history as they were originally constructed for John Jacob and Vincent Astor to serve as the offices for their respective real estate operations. I know we don't have the time today to detail that history, but I want to acknowledge that the history of the buildings, both architecturally and commercially, was a major attraction in purchasing the buildings by our client. And there is the desire to preserve as much as possible, including a lot of significant interior details and woodwork and the bank vault at number 21, which is largely in historic original condition. Both on the interior and the exterior, the renovation work that we are presenting is designed to be modest and respectful of the history and character of the original buildings, including restoration of some deteriorated and altered facade features to their historic conditions, which we are being, which we are coordinating with staff at staff level. The proposed additions we are presenting today are motivated by contemporary office needs, including the addition of an elevator in the rear to serve both buildings and a fourth floor extension at number 23 to create a space large enough to accommodate meetings and conferences for the hundred person office occupancy. On page three, we see, just takes just waiting for it to load. Here we see the location of the two buildings, mid-block on 26th Street, with the key components that we're reviewing today, the fourth floor extension to the existing penthouse at number 23 on the west and the addition of a new elevator and elevator corridor in the combined rear yard, which will serve as the vertical circulation for both buildings. The map also identifies the key viewpoints for the visibility studies and mockups we'll be presenting on the following pages. There is no visibility of the proposed work from the vantage points on 26th Street and minor visibility from locations F and G on 25th Street, in an area about a 12-foot-long stretch of sidewalk, which looks over an open parking lot and across the church on the south side of the block on 26th. As mentioned above, the existing structures at 21 and 23 are just three stories and they are surrounded by very large buildings to either side, both adjacent on the north side of the block and across the street on the south side of the block. This here presents the elevation with our two buildings encircled in the middle of the larger buildings to both the east and the west. The historic photos show the changes to the facade over time and present the reference points for the key details we are trying to restore at staff level. You can see in the lower right-hand photo of number 21, the extension which was added in 1991 prior to the designation of the district, which is a visible extension in an existing condition. The next page shows the current condition of the, the two buildings, 21 on the right, 23 on the left, with some of the facade alterations, air conditioners and shutters and an entryway, which we are improving at staff level. And the condition of the existing rear yard and where the elevator will be constructed. On this page, we have the front elevation drawings existing on the left and proposed on the right, where you can see in elevation, the fourth floor extension at number 23 and the elevator behind the two buildings, sort of in the middle there. These elements are visible in pure elevation, but not in in actual massing in real life, which we will be showing on the subsequent drawings. And then a drawing of the elevator tower in the rear, which is designed in brick with limestone banding to inspired by the historic facade at number 21. The floor plans existing on the left and proposed on the right documenting the fourth floor extension and elevator corridor between the two buildings. And then mechanical equipment on the, the far right side. This here is a section of number 21, which shows the relationship of the elevator addition in the drawing on the right-hand side and a slightly modified bulkhead at number 21 to reduce its visibility, the, the visibility of the existing bulkhead. And a section looking in the opposite direction showing the rooftop extension at number 23 and its relationship to the elevator tower in the rear yard. Then we have overall existing section of number 23 and proposed overall section here on the next page showing the existing penthouse in the rear and our extension at the front of the building. Photos of the rooftop mockups, which we completed in coordination with, with Leanne, our staff member. These photos are taken from the roof itself, showing that the mockups were completed as the subsequent photos on, from the street vantage points on 26th Street confirm that with the mockups in place, there is no visibility from the sightlines A and D on this page and then sightlines M and N on the next page. The sort of key in question here are these sightlines F and G from 25th Street, looking across the parking lot where there is minor visibility. You can see in the mockup presented on the left, sightline F, the, the small swatch of orange safety netting in the mockup is presented. And sightline G, which we've used a red arrow to highlight where there's even a, a smaller sliver of the extension. On the next page, are additional proposed photo montages on the right-hand side where the mockup has been replaced by the proposed materialities for the roof and the windows. And a similar photo montage from sightline G. What you can see in both of these is that the, the tall buildings on the north side of the block mean that even though there is minor visibility here, there is no additional silhouetting created by the rooftop extension or by the elevator tower. And then our final page, we're presenting a rendering of the proposed work from sightline F, which shows that the specifications and the materials being selected match the existing materials, an aged copper finish for the new roof, which matches the existing standing seam roof on the number 21 extension. And windows in a sort of red burgundy finish to mesh the windows that are already existing in the number 21 rooftop extension. And then on the right, our selections for the brick and limestone banding that will be used for the elevator tower. Thank you. We look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I'll turn it over to Sasha Sealy to take us through any testimony.
Thank you. So I did not receive any signups for this item in advance. I'm just going to take a glance over to confirm, and I do not see that there's anyone here wishing to speak on this item. So I will just note for the record that we did receive a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Five recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn it back over to Chair Carol.
Thank you. Okay. So not a lot to comment on. I don't, I'd like to ask applicants if you'd like to make any final statements before we move to our discussion.
No final statements. I'm happy to answer any questions if those occur.
All right, and Commissioners, are there any final questions? Not seeing any, so I'm sending you all requests to unmute. All right, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So motion.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on these buildings, which are in a district where there were sort of waves of development that have resulted in buildings of various sizes. Former residential buildings that were converted for commercial use and taller commercial buildings. And even the buildings that were originally built during the residential wave of development were altered over time and were these with other accretions as they converted to other uses. So this is a proposal for additions and there is some partial visibility through the back. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you begin this one?
Sure. I really, I think your summary of the district is really what motivates my thinking on this, that the district is very much a layered experience, where you see these odd juxtapositions of very big buildings and very little ones, very old ones, less old ones, different styles, different heights, different volumes, different ways of treating the city. And especially on this, these two blocks, 26th, 25th, with that church across the street through a block, it's, it's a very wonderful little area of the city where you really feel history kind of weaving through as a stratum. And it's for that reason that I think that the, you know, I think that these two buildings are very, very important because they represent that visualization of history very, very strongly on that block. I don't think that the addition is in any way inappropriate. I think, I think the addition of the elevator, which is not, basically not visible from the front and the rooftop addition is fine. But I, I have to say, even though I know it's something that's well beyond our ability to, to request, given you know, the nature of the way these things work, I, I think that the addition over the Stent Building is a crime and I think that it's, it's a lost opportunity with the scope of this nature to not modify that that hurtful addition that disregards the, the charm and quality of the, of the building. But that said, it, it wouldn't prevent me from finding the current application appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I find this appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I love hearing even the brief history of the house. I would love to hear more about the Astors, these two buildings that they occupy. I think this is a great adaptive reuse of the two buildings for, I guess, a corporate use here, headquarters. So I love the story as it continues. And I completely agree that this is an appropriate intervention on the rooftop.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree. I, I think it's appropriate, well done, and very minimally visible in the back.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I find it very appropriate.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Appropriate as is, nothing to add.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I too find it appropriate. I, I lived in the eighties at number 11 and a half, West 26th Street. And interestingly, that your plan here does not show the 11 and a half. And I'm wondering if, if that has since changed or 11 and a half has just never made it to to the annotation of the plans of the street plan itself. Anyway, the view, the, the, the rear yard on, on this block, it's, it's cut up as, as we see in the plan, is such an amazing rear yard because it's like, it's like a West Side Story stage set. It's something about it. It's very as, as Commissioner Goldblum was saying, you know, and others have said, there is such a variety here of periods and accretions and accumulations. And all of those are evidenced on the rear yard, which is which is just kind of the rears of everything. It doesn't, there is no, obviously no donut. There's no, there's no other kind of charm. But it's very raw and spectacular view of the Empire State Building from the rear in this particular block. And I don't know, that may have been there may be buildings now built in front of it on Broadway and beyond that, that obscure that view, but it's, it's a very powerful spot, both on the, on the street and on the, and on the rear. But I, I do think that I don't think there's much that could impact that rear, but I don't think this one does. And, and as I've said, appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I think that the design and materials and the minimal visibility of the rooftop and, and back addition are totally
Okay, all right. So I think we have a consensus to approve. I know, Michael, you had a concern about the other addition, but would you feel comfortable reading this motion?
Sure. Regarding 21 to 23 West 26th Street, the Madison Square North Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among features that contribute in special architectural and historic character of the Madison Square North Historic District, and I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work does not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building, that this pair of buildings has had, have had significant alterations throughout their history, including construction of an addition at number 21 and a reconstruction at facade at number 23. Therefore, the proposed work will be in keeping with the building's history of expansion and alterations. That the rooftop addition and associated mechanical equivalent will not be visible from West 26th Street and will only be minimally visible from a limited vantage point on West 25th Street through a parking lot and over a lower building and within the context of larger surrounding buildings and will be visually disconnected from the primary facades of the buildings and therefore will not detract from the buildings or from the adjacent historic buildings. The design material, materials of the proposed rooftop addition, featuring a sloped roof with green colored aluminum standing seam and metal cladding and an aluminum window assembly with a deep red finish will harmonize with the modern addition of the adjacent building, that this building is surrounded by large buildings and other rear yard incursions, therefore, presence of proposed rear yard addition, which is situated in a light court between the two buildings, will not diminish the central green space. That the materiality of the rear and elevator addition, consisting of brick and stone cladding, will harmonize with the buildings and neighboring buildings on the block and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the buildings or Madison Square North Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, which was in that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next and final item.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, the last item that we'll be looking at today is public hearing item number seven, LPC 21-09081. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1024, Lot 7, 243 West 52nd Street. The Anta Theater, originally Guild Theater, now Virginia Theater, individual landmark. This is a 15th century Tuscan-style theater building designed by Crane and Franzheim and built in 1924 to 25. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of wall signage.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Tolan, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to quick click on your screen. Please unmute yourself. You can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you
Good afternoon. My name is Tolan Grinnell. I'm the VP of Building Operations for J. Jameson Theater. I'm also joined by Hal Goldberg, who is J. Jameson's Chief Operating Officer. We're making a proposal today for the August Wilson Theater. Just a technicality, the, we conventionally refer the address of theaters being 245, but the official address is 243 to 257 West 52nd Street. All right. The August Wilson Theater is located on the northern end of the Broadway Theater District in this di- In this diagram, you can see the theater as a red square on the the city streets. The theater is directly across the street from Neil Simon and around the corner from the Broadway Theater. The theater is located on the north side of West Fifty Second Street between Broadway and Eighth Avenue, and it was originally built as the Guild Theater in nineteen twenty five. In nineteen eighty five, the theater became a designated landmark. In two thousand and five, it was renamed the August Wilson Theater after the esteemed playwright. And in twenty fifteen, the buildings surrounding the theater on all three sides were demolished and developed into a single mid-rise luxury rental tower with underground parking. In the diagram on the right, you can see the theater surrounded by those three consolidated lots. Here are some alternative views of the theater, looking from the west, from the north facing the marquee, and again from the east. The sign that we're proposing would be installed on the west facing wall of the theater. The sign would face Eighth Avenue. You can see it as the yellow rectangle in the photo to the left. The sign would display theater related advertisement material only, which would include or could include Broadway shows and other live events, films, TV programs related to Broadway shows or other live events, companies providing products or services to the Broadway or live event industry, or sponsors or vendors of Ju Jameson or a Ju Jameson show. The sign would be changed approximately once a year. The sign would be identical in size to the adjacent blade sign. The sign would be frameless and would be made from printed graphic film designed for textured surfaces. And we would propose that the gray stucco projecting wall would be painted a landmark approved color to help differentiate the historic facade from the demolished structure to the west. We would like to propose to paint the wall a brick color similar in appearance to the tall stage house that you can see looming over the top of the landmark facade. While we were considering the sign, we uncovered this nineteen forties tax photo. And you can see clearly that originally this wall did in fact have a sign. And in this photo, you can also see the three story high stone buildings that flank the building to the east and the west. The size of the sign again would be the same size as the blade sign that's on the facade. It would be seven foot six wide by sixteen foot six tall and would be set back from the corner or edge of the building two feet, which we think will help differentiate the sign from the handsome edge architectural features of the building. The proposed material for this sign would be to use a printed graphic film that's designed for textured surfaces. This is essentially the state of the industry or a state of the art right now. This material will be applied directly to the masonry wall surface. The film forms over the contours and textures of the wall. And the material is removable or reversible and wouldn't harm or alter the masonry wall when it's changed. The material that would be used for this printed sign is three M Scotch Cowl. You can see an image of that product to the left. And here are some examples of lot line signs that are installed in the theater district. And the image to the left is the Gershwin Theater on West Fifty First Street. This has a similar configuration to what we're proposing at the August Wilson, where there is a blade sign near the corner of the building and then a fixed sign on the lot line wall. In the center is the Imperial Theater. This is a stretched vinyl sign on West Forty Fifth. And then further down on West Forty Fifth, the Scientology Center has another large stretch vinyl sign on the lot line wall. Here are some examples of signs applied directly to masonry walls in the midtown area. The image to the left is on the corner of Fifty Second and Eleventh Avenue. This is a printed graphic film using the same kind of material we're proposing for the August Wilson Theater. In the center is the sign that I'm sure everybody is aware of, the large sign that's visible from Thirty Fourth and Eighth Avenue. This is a painted sign. And then to the right is another printed graphic film sign on Park Avenue and Thirty Second Street. So here are some detailed photos showing the existing conditions of the west wall at the August Wilson. There's some detailed photos of the August Wilson Theater's west wall. The photo on the left has two yellow arrows. Those arrows are pointing towards the subterranean parking or parking ramps. Arrow number one is pointing to the ramp that leads to a parking lot that's below the building that sits across the entire corner of West Fifty Second and Eighth Avenue. And arrow two is pointing towards the ramp that leads to the subterranean parking lot of the large ARO building, which is the development that encompassed three lots that around the sides of the August Wilson. The photo on the right shows the walkway that's separated by a parapet wall. This walkway leads to the service entrance of the ARO building, again, the the mid-rise tower to the north of the theater. You can also see in this photo two other things. One of them is the steel structure that's holding together the lower part of the west wall of the theater. That steel is permanent. It was installed in twenty fifteen when the adjacent structures were demolished. And the other thing you can see here is the remnant outline of the original three story brownstone buildings that were there in the nineteen twenties. We do not believe that these parking lots will be built over. And we do not believe there will be any changes to the appearance of this west wall in the future. So in conclusion, there are existing lot line signs in the theater district and midtown area that are similar to what we are proposing. The proposed sign would be in keeping with the historic sign located on the same wall from the nineteen forties. Again, you can see that photo to the right. And the proposed sign would be used for Broadway and live entertainment advertising related content only. And for these reasons, we hope the commission will agree that the sign is appropriate. And we're happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. All right, we do have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, thank you. Why did you, were there, were any of the photographs that you showed of signs in the theater district, were those on buildings that were designated landmarks? And were they approved by the commission?
I don't know the strict answer to that question. I'm sorry.
Okay. And the commission has a a pretty long history of approving signs of this nature in other places that are painted on the wall by hand. Why, what, why do you, did you choose to go with a vinyl applique?
So I'm going to back up one image here. If I can get it to back up. We had originally had a slightly different vision for this sign. And in the course of our investigation about what might be appropriate or attractive, we hired a survey company to determine, you know, was the wall actually within our property line? That was an early question we had. And when the survey came back, it was determined that this west wall where we're proposing to put the sign is only one inch within our property line. So there was a moment where we thought the sign might have a frame or might have illumination or other things. And we realized with the very limited space we had, that we were restricted to something that was going to be extremely flat. So then, of course, we explored, well, we should paint the sign. It'll, it'll feel historic. It'll feel more like old Broadway, if you will. And then we started to look carefully at what the logistics of that would be. And the reason why I backed up to this photo is the photo on the right is showing this narrow walkway and parapet wall that separates the parking ramp from the service entrance to the ARO building. We we ran into the reality that trying to work with our neighbor to paint a sign routinely over the top of this narrow service corridor was going to become extremely problematic. And although we might have a good relationship with our neighbor now in in twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, we may not have that kind of easy relationship in the future. And so we started exploring with our sign specialists, you know, what other products or ways could we approach this? And the idea of doing the printed graphic film seems like the logical conclusion. It would still appear very flat and painted like, if you will. Wouldn't have a frame, could be changed in a, in a single day. And then also wouldn't harm the wall. So this is why it's part of our proposal.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I think Commissioner Devonshire, did you have a question? No, long, was that your question, maybe?
Michael asked my question.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, did I misunderstand you? The the existing wall now, are you going to paint it with a color?
We would propose to paint it a brick color similar to the tall stage house that you can see above the theater.
And you you would paint the whole wall?
We would paint the the projecting wall, that gray stucco wall that we would not paint the steel structure or the rest of the brick wall, just the stuccoed wall itself.
It's a stucco wall. And and the example that you showed, we don't have an example of what that would look like.
I don't have, I don't have a mockup. And I would imagine that we could work with our preservationists to, at a stack level, to work on the color.
Okay, because it'd be good to see what the holistic, what that face looks like. Because that's what you will see from across the street. I mean, you'll be seeing that scar. And so if there was some way that I could be convinced that it would be different. But thank you very much.
So I think, you know, I think your point is that rather than having to, well, besides the logistics of repainting every time you want to change the sign, you'd have to paint it, and that would be more layers being added to the facade, the side facade that they, this is removable. But in terms of its appearance, you were explaining that it's, it reveals the texture of the brick underneath and so could look like it's painted. Does it have a sheen on it? Or does it have, you know, what, what's the finish quality and how might that replicate a painted finish?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. So we the appearance of the product itself is matte. I think when you see the material in daylight, I think probably everyone on on this Zoom is is familiar with this kind of product. It appears different at different times of day, to be honest. And so if you have raking light and it catches the upper edges of the texture, it may appear glossy, but in fact, the product is matte finished itself.
Any other questions? Why don't we move to public testimony and then we'll come back to you. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Sasha Sealy to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So I did not receive any signups in advance for this item, so I'm just going to take a glance over just to double check. And I don't see that there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item. So I'll just note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends denial of the application unless the applicant restricts the advertisements which appear on such sign to legitimate theatrical productions produced by the applicant and or its affiliates in the Broadway Theaters. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. So would you like to address the community board concern about the the content? And, you know, commissioners, I'll remind you that we don't necessarily regulate content, but the, we do, we have looked at, you know, whether it's text versus imagery. And in for the painted wall signs that we've approved in some of our industrial historic districts, we have actually become more flexible about that type of content. But if you can respond directly to the question about the content on your site, that would be helpful.
Tolan, if I may, I'm Hal Goldberg, Chief Operating Officer. I think, you know, we we spent a considerable amount of time trying to focus the types of things we would want to advertise on there. We're not asking to be able to advertise anything. We have focused it. You know, when when we have, thinking about how to expand somewhat the types of things we would want to advertise on there, thinking about our ticketing systems, some of our relationships within the industry, like the Actors Fund. You think about a vendor like Sound Associates who gives out infrared hearing devices and other other sort of products that for people with disabilities in our theaters. We we try to expand what we're doing, but also keep it very narrowly focused on Broadway, live events, our theater, the industry at large. We're not looking to sort of throw up a McDonald's ad up there or anything like that. And understanding it's more than just the name of the show or the 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 presentation in the theater, but looking for an opportunity to present some of these other Broadway, you know, related companies or vendors.
And it could be a combination of text and or imagery?
Correct.
Okay. Which is sort of what we historically looked at. All right, Commissioner Chapin and then Commissioner Goldblum again.
I, yeah, I have a question about the existing sign, which obviously displays the, and the mockup is showing, or the picture rather, is showing, you know, the current, let's say, production that's on. Can that, does that change? And I don't mean can it rotate through things? Is it, is it the kind of display that can rotate through a variety of things?
It it's not. It's, you have to have a crane come and change the plastic sign faces themselves. It's illuminated from within. It doesn't have any digital components.
So it's not digital or LED? That's what I was wondering. Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Just a question for staff from, maybe Cory or you. I would imagine that every painted wall sign that that the commission approves is by its nature on on a lot line. Therefore, the access to that wall must be obtained with the cooperation of the neighbor. How do, how do they negotiate this? I mean, is, you know, are are the painters whom we approve on a regular basis for, you know, do they run into trouble with access?
Well, I'll let Cory go, but I think in the, I think we'd have to say we probably don't know, and we'd assume that they've worked out some arrangement with neighbors. And I think many times on a, you know, sort of a typical five story building in Soho, they can hang a swing scaffold down from the top without having to actually go on to the neighbor's property, even though they'd be overhanging. Cory, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that or know from your experience, the kinds of arrangements that are made.
No, I I think what you said last is right, that it's most often done with a swing stage that's rigged and dropped from their own roof and overhangs it for a short period of time.
And because this roof is a terracotta roof, you couldn't do that.
That's probably an applicant, a question for the applicant, but I do think that's what they expressed earlier.
May I?
Yes, please go ahead.
Some color to this. So two, two things. One, yes, we don't have a convenient, easy way to rig this building with a suspended scaffold because of the historic tile, clay towel roof. The second thing, anecdotally, I've spent most of my career in in the large scale construction and restoration business and have worked on and adjacent to many properties in the downtown area that I've painted signs. And in all of those different instances, the sign was over the top of an adjacent building's roof. So that when we would suspend a scaffold or when a vendor would suspend a scaffold to paint a sign, a sidewalk bridge wasn't required. And so you could have an access agreement with your neighbor that was really more about protection, but not necessarily pedestrian protection, which is the second layer of problem that we have here is that we are right over the top of this service entrance corridor to this other very large building. So those two things So those two things combined are really what started to drive us in in the direction of using the printed vinyl.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, I think we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion then. So Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. So I think this is kind of an interesting application on a few different levels. We certainly have had experience with. Painted our wall sign advertising signs on lot lines in some of our historic districts, particularly the industrial or. Traditionally industrial or commercial historic districts. And we have, you know, sort of evolved to a policy where if they are small. Relative to the entire side wall that we are pretty flexible on content and allow any. Any. Combination of text or imagery as long as it's painted. We have not yet. Seen this material. I think the staff has started to see it from applicants, other applicants, but we I don't think we as the commission has have reviewed it yet. But one of the benefits that has been presented to us in those cases is that it. Allows for fewer layers of paint on the side brick facades, which. Maybe better for the facades and that it's easily reversible without having to do heavy stripping. And that it does have a. Sort of painterly finish because you can read the texture through it. And then the other thing to think about it in that in those cases, we really are looking at a historic district and the. Impact on the historic district as a whole. In this case, we are looking at an individual landmark and this sort of utilitarian side facade. So it's a slightly different analysis. But it when we have looked at signage on facades as well as primary facades and side facades and roofs. Of in other individual landmarks in Times Square, we have noted, while not a historic district, we have noted that. These buildings have always been in a district or an area that historically had. A vibrant history of signage and and that with evolving technology, those signs have evolved and we've allowed a number of illuminated signs on various individual landmarks in. In the Times Square area because of that history. And in this case, we could see that this building did have a sign actually on this side wall historically. So there is some precedent for the commission looking at signs on buildings and non traditional locations on buildings and. And even at this building, there is a precedent for the sign on the side. So then the question is again about what material and that it should be. And I think. You know, it's this material intrigues me because I do think there's some unique challenges at this particular site, but I also. Do wonder about the, you know, the. Effect that repeated painted applications have on our historic buildings and do wonder whether this. Material might alleviate some of that and still have a painterly appearance. So we, you know, we don't have a mock up of it, but I think. If there's any place that one could test a different material, you know, perhaps the Times Square area. Would be one of those places on this very utilitarian side of the building. And that way we may be able to think about it differently in other historic districts as well. So I think it's just. This is there's a lot of a lot to think about here. So we'll begin our discussion and I think Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start on this one?
I I guess. Well, to begin with, it's it's. Very likely that it's Portland cement based stucco on this wall. And so. If the wall is painted and an adhesive. Somewhat adhesive sign is applied to it, the worst that's going to happen is it's going to pull the paint off of the stucco when it goes. So. That's a maintenance issue that that we don't necessarily have to worry about. I I. The first thing that strikes me is how on earth? Was this facade allowed to have that blade sign that's sticking out of it? You know, to to me, that that's the real villain here. On the other hand, I I. I'm I'm at a loss to think of why someone would want to put one sign. Within what looks like about ten feet of another sign, but you know, that's not my purview either. What I what my purview is is the the individual landmark. And I have to say that to me, the most important thing going on. With this building is that front principal facade. And this sign does nothing. To obscure it, to take attention away from it. And so I'm actually okay with this. So there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland.
Yeah, I was a little confused about what all the hullabaloo was about. There's a picture on the right from the side. Picture on the left, throwing a proposed sign in almost the exact position. There is a blade sign which I presume we approved or at least predates us. So the relationship of the two could be questioned, but I don't think we have a. Right to necessarily deny it because of that. So and and to the degree this is a new. Material. I think it's it's appropriate to try it out and this is a good place to do it and I'm all in favor of this.
Great. Commissioner Luttrell. She I don't she had to leave. Commissioner Jefferson.
I can approve this. I I just worry about the the stucco. And if they're going to paint it, I would like to see it painted. And in relationship to the unpaid it part, but if that's not going to happen, I.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Gustafson.
Well, I'm. I I'm inclined to approve it, but I do have a couple of comments on it. You know, this is an individual landmark and that and that, you know, rate always raises the standard. And. And this, although. There seems to be a relatively high volume of signage on this building relative to the. Size of the building it. You know, it I do agree with Commissioner Devonshire that it's the front of the building that really matters here. However, with regard to that, the material being used for it, but might I suggest that we, since this is supposed to be a master plan? That we approve this with a shorter term than we might otherwise approve a master plan. Just so that we can see how this material. How it looks, how it withstands the weather, et cetera, et cetera. So rather than. I don't know what we typically would do, whether it would be a five year period or whatever, maybe we should do it for a for a three and just see how it goes and. And make a determination in the future.
Right, which I think we typically do ten years for those other master plans, so.
So maybe something significantly shorter than that because. You know, if this turns out to be a disaster, we don't really want to be locked in for ten years.
Okay, so maybe a five year term. For a five year.
Are you to go, Chair Carol, are you negotiating with me? Is that what you do?
But I do, because I do think that we really have treated signage very differently on individual landmarks in this particular neighborhood and I think. I want to also sort of respect those that past regulatory history as well. But yes, so I would negotiate up to five.
I'm sticking with three.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Hi, yes. So. I like Commissioner Jefferson, I'm really. Surprised about the blade sign, but it's. But the and and the fact is that the nineteen forty's photograph. Yes, it does show a sign on the side wall. But there was no blade sign. So that maybe that made sense for that. For that period or something there. I also think that this particular return. Is actually very kind of important to our understanding of the building. I don't necessarily agree with. That that the that the. Kind of the value or the special quality of this historic building is only kind of the front facade. Because understanding that kind of shed roof, even at the way that it existed. It's in other words, it's not kind of a leftover that happens once demolition occurs. It existed in the nineteen forty's condition too. With the setback of this of the shorter building adjacent to it. So I think it's a very important part of the of the read of the building on the street and it's unusual. The way that we under that we see that kind of, you know, we understand that there might be a some kind of a special roofing material there or historic roofing material. Because of that particular angle that we would that we see from the street face. So. I don't think it's secondary. I think it belongs to the primary. So when I was looking at this and and I want to, I I'm trying to remember that I was very much opposed to. To painted even painted sign on the other individual landmark, the Baird Conde building, the Sullivan. Building. And I oppose that. So I'm I'm trying to remember what my thinking. Was there and I just felt that it really took away. From the in the quality, the end of the the kind of the stature of the individual landmark and I. And it is a little, you are right, it's a little bit different in this particular district and the edge of this district where there is a lot of signage, so. I'm I'm conflicted on that. I think that the sign as they've proposed it is actually strange size in in the way that it kind of. Is is like the blade sign, but not like the blade sign. So my first instinct was it shouldn't be here at all, this what's being proposed. And then I was and when they showed us the the other precedent, the other conditions and other theaters. Where there are much larger painted signs. I thought, well, wait a second. Maybe this should be a much larger sign so that it really kind of. Calls attention to that X to that return and says we're this belongs to this is the theater. This is the theater's edge and. This is the way we advertise the stuff that's going on in the theater belongs to the building. I I don't like what's being what's proposed here now. I don't think that the size is right. I'm less concerned about the material. But you know, the the application of this adhesive material that bothers me a little bit less. But I don't think it's quite right either. And I do think that this is a is an individual landmark that this side. Edge is the important part of its individual stature. So. I think I'm against it.
Okay, okay, I do, you know, I I I think I do want to though remind everybody that we have. On individual landmarks throughout this neighborhood. Approved illuminated signs on side and on primary facades over windows and decorative features. So and on roofs and. So you know, we have sort of looked at the tradition of signage in in this area. So I think, you know, given the precedent of a historic sign on this particular building in this location. I I think it for me, knowing that we've approved so much more on other individual landmarks, it's hard to say that something that's. Comparable to what they had historically is not appropriate. But I think the size does look odd in that the montage and I don't. Know if it's the rendering because I think it's supposed to actually match the size of the blade sign and it doesn't look like it looks taller and skinnier and in this yellow rendered box. That may be a rendering error. Okay, Commissioner Chiepin.
Okay, so yes, they may not have done themselves a favor by using just a. A patch of yellow rather than some representation of a painted sign. Which is not going to be but a vinyl sign. So first of all, now I I like painted wall signs a lot. And I'm very not so. Comfortable with the vinyl sign. And the particular problem I have here, though, is that this sign right up against. You know, near the. Blade sign to me just I I I find it very distracting and I don't think it's appropriate. In that location. If they want to have something that's very changeable. Having one of their signs somewhere be a digital sign, either the blade sign or something else where they could have. New messages on a regular basis without. You know, hopefully having to have a crane, you know. Go up every time to change. Things would seem more sensible to me and. When I don't know if it would really be less costly for them. I mean, we'd have to approve it, obviously, if it was an LED official sign. One of their signs I assume. But I feel like. There's enough signage on this building already and I don't like the idea of a sign right next to. That blade side because I think. If you're looking at view six, it's very distracting. And. Maybe if it had been, it hadn't had been shown in a different way, it would look less distracting, but. I just feel like I would normally approve another sign right next to another assignment in the position. So I'm I'm not comfortable that I'm afraid in this particular case.
Right. I mean, I I guess I feel because, you know, when you are going to the theater and you look down the long side streets, there is a lot of signage to show you. The theater that you're trying to approach. And I think because of this unfortunate situation next door with the parking ramps. There's a void there that. You know, perhaps makes it less. You know, noticeable as a as a destination. All right, Commissioner Goldblum.
Wow, interesting conversation. I I. I agree with a lot of what Adi said about the importance of the sidewall. Especially given the fact that these ramps are not going to go away anytime soon. So the reading of the building is a three dimensional object. Even if that was not contemplated by the original architect. And was not a consideration when the building was designed. I think is an important aspect of how it is perceived now in the district. Or in the in the area as a as an individual structure. And so I think that the applicant's choice to paint the sidewall to match the brick is a good one. I think that what I would suggest is that that paint not extend. Over the shadow of the former townhouse so that the reading of the of the layers of the history of the. Site can be more. Evident to a layperson walking down the street. And so that the paint should extend to that. Scar both on the top and on the side. To kind of define it with with the brick color. I think that's an appropriate way to go and it improves, I think. The three dimensional reading of the building. As one sees it on the street. In terms of the quantity of signage, I I agree with you, Chair Carol, that. This district is about its signage and its theater signage in specific. So I really don't have any concern about the notion of another sign here, even though it is next to an unpleasant and probably predate, you know, preexisting blade sign. I don't think that that in and of itself disqualifies it for me as an appropriate sign. I do think, however, that the sign regulations that we impose on other folks in terms of border and content. And you know, the the rather rather modest limitations that we impose on those other signs being posed here as well, with the exception of the paint. Now, for me, the 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 use of a painted or the painted sign. Is important, not only because that's how it was done in the past. But because it preserves an industry in our city. That I think is as valuable as as preserving buildings, you know, we preserve the cast iron industry, the wrought iron industry, the terracotta industry, all of these. These industries, you know, leaded glass have 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 done well because of the. Popularity of 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 historic preservation. And so I think. The perpetuation of painted signage is is in that category for me. But the applicant, I think, has convinced me that this is an app, this is a an application of that technology that would not be. Successful. So I'm willing to go with the. The application of the vinyl sign, as long as it's made clear that number one, it does adhere tightly to the. Substrate and shows telegraphs the content of the substrate, you know, the texture of the substrate. and shows telegraphs the content of the substrate, you know, the texture of the substrate as the applicant demonstrated and that it's of a finish that would be similar to what we would see in the case of paint. And I I I don't know whether I I I think I think John's idea about limiting the duration is probably a good one. I'm not too afraid that it would be unsuccessful. I think it would be, I think as long as it it looks like the ones that he showed us, I think it would be hard for most folks to see it. But I I I think that it is not a bad idea in case I'm totally wrong.
Okay, all right, so think I want to thank everybody for your thoughtful comments on it. I do think it was an interesting discussion and interesting to think about. I do think we have six of us to approve it with some modifications. One being that it be have the same restrictions that we apply for other painted wall signs, such as the border, and that it be as tightly adhered to the substrate as possible and that we limit it for a three year term to be reevaluated after that time. So why don't I go ahead and make that motion and then we'll do the vote and see where we end up. Okay, in the matter of docket number 21-09081243, West 52nd Street. It's actually August Wilson Theater, originally Guild Theater, then Virginia Theater and and then Anta Theater, individual landmark. A 15th century Tuscan style theater building designed by Crane and Franzheim and built in 1924 to 25. This is an application to establish a master plan governing the future installation of wall signage. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the wall signs are traditional, the wall signs are a traditional method of advertising typically on plain secondary facades and that Broadway theaters have historically featured a large quantity and variety of signage. That the proposed sign will be installed at an undeveloped secondary elevation consisting of plain painted and stucco coated masonry and will not conceal any significant architectural features that the sign will be reminiscent of and placed in a similar location to the historic lot line wall sign that was present historically at the building, that the installation will be easily reversible and will not damage any historic fabric and that the use of vinyl instead of paint will allow the sign, which is over a walkway to a service entrance at a separately owned building, to be quickly changed without disrupting access to the service entrance. That the printed graphic film will reveal the contours and texture of the wall surface. So the final appearance will be in keeping with the traditional painted application methods and historic commercial character of painted wall signs. That the sign and that the sign content will be changed approximately once per year and that the proposed master plan will be valid for a period of three years and that the applicant will document every sign approved under the master plan. So there will be a record the commission can consider when reviewing the effectiveness of the master plan criteria. And I also recommend that the some of the other restrictions that we apply to the painted wall signs in other districts, including a border and setback, be applied to this master plan and that the that the paint not extend beyond the line of the where the where the former row house met the theater and that the material be is adhered as tight adhered as tightly as possible to the brick, working in consultation with staff. Right, and would Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
No.
Commissioner Chapin.
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
And that's it, that's six in favor and two opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, all right, so that's approved with those conditions. And please continue to work with the staff. And we look forward to seeing the examples of each of the signs and looking and to see how effective this material and this master plan criteria are. Thank you, and that concludes, thank you, that concludes our hearing today. I want to thank everybody for participating and as always, thank you commissioners for your time and dedication and thought. Take care, we'll see you next week. And we'll also ask every member of the public to exit the meeting so that we can close our webinar.